Call the meeting of the school board together. I want to read an opening statement to you before we start. Thank you for attending this joint session of your local government. Please note the posting of the governor's executive order regarding use of our facilities. It is by our adherence to such processes that our schools have been able to be a leader, offering students in-school instruction during these trying times. We appreciate your cooperation in helping us keep our community healthy and to keep schools operating with in-person instruction. We will need to continue to work together to maintain course. As always, the safety and well-being of our students, staff, and our families continues to be our highest priority. Thank you for coming.
Now, I'd like to open the meeting for the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors. And just let you all know that we greatly appreciate you allowing us to use your facilities.
All right. We'll stand for the pledge, everyone.
Attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Will you pause for a moment of silence, please? So, a motion from the school board to adopt the agenda for this evening.
So moved.
A motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Ruben. Is there any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's the order.
Can I have a motion from the Board of Supervisors to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
A second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right. So, the first thing we have here is a report from our student liaison so that she doesn't have to stay here for hours. Please come. I think she won't. She may choose to stay, but...
Whatever you want to see.
Okay. I'd like to express my gratitude on behalf of the student body for all the financial support the Board of Supervisors has provided in our learning environment, a happy, healthy environment. And in regards to that student body, I am so grateful to have all the students applying one promise. Remember before grading, we finally decided that traditional prom just wasn't the only way we was going to run six feet apart. Furthermore, the expectations that surround prom had the juniors who was in charge of planning it doing what they tried to do with their best and their best. Junior council responded to that. The junior council did everything that we could possibly do. They're coming up with their own activities and with a theme, which at this point is going to be Hawaiian luau. The students, along with the students, will be able to do an outdoor move, have lots of moving, high-tech games, like building their mini golf, possibly, and much more, all of which is being planned with social distancing and sanitizing items in mind. As of now, a survey is being sent out to all the juniors and seniors to see if there's enough interest to fall through with this idea. Our hope is that the student body will be as... And we have our fingers crossed for that. What can happen? And then I would like to quickly address a different issue that I saw, which is for better communication between our school and students about courses, exams, and certifications that our school, that we have the opportunity to get at our school. So after talking to a few of my peers and some of the others, I realized that students lack an understanding of the difference in benefits and downsides between AP, dual enrollment, and honor classes, and that most of them aren't aware of the different workforce and career certifications that are available. Of course, the students are very, very lucky to have wonderful counselors like Ms. Pond and everyone on the POG team who are happy to answer our questions, but my biggest concern is that students don't know what questions to ask them. For example, with the new Ag Academy, a student can achieve a certificate as a certified veterinarian assistant by the time they leave school. But do students know what these requirements entail? Do they know how many courses are needed, if they're needed in a certain order, et cetera? In regards to DE and AP, many students don't seem to understand that while DE classes are readily acceptable in Virginia schools, outside of Virginia, they are less accepted, and students would need to check in with their future schools to see if taking these courses would benefit them or if it would be more beneficial to take an AP class instead. Additionally, almost none of the students I have spoken to know about taking AP classes with virtual Virginia that aren't offered here in school. It is my concern that this lack of openness about this information could potentially put students at a major disadvantage, and that why I believe information, and why I believe in informational presentation touching upon these subjects near the end of the school year before scheduling is required, before those forms have to be turned in, would be influential for our student body. I would suggest that this presentation could be an interactive PowerPoint that could then be sent out to four-day students, hybrid students, or all virtual students, and it could include embedded videos that talk about the different subjects. This would allow students to look at the topics that they're interested in and skip over the ones that they have no interest in. It would also allow for administration to reuse this PowerPoint over and over again, only replacing videos who need updated information instead of redoing it every time. That is all. Thank you for your time.
Great. Does anybody have a question? Anybody?
Oh, thank you very much.
Very, very well done.
Thank you.
Very good information. I was actually wondering if maybe we could get, have you written it down where you could email it?
Yes.
Yeah, because you have a copy of something like...
I can definitely email.
Send it to the clerk. If you can send it to the clerk, she'll make sure we get a copy. Great. Very good, very good.
Lovely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we're moving on to the part of our, our meeting where we have presentations about the budget and things that impact our budget. And so, Dr. Grimsley?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. The first item, 3.1, is just a quick overview with Pierce Group benefits. As you remember, the board chose to go with Pierce Group, looking at supplementary insurance plans and things like that, and supplementary offerings. And then we expanded it to actually take over more of our benefits services. So they're here tonight to give a brief update, an overview of how that's going and what we're looking like. So, ladies. Sarah Struckman.
Thank you so much, Dr. Grimsley. My name is Sarah Struckman. I have a background in public sector. I not only want to thank you for your time this evening and for allowing Dee Byers and I to attend, but knowing what you do every day, I just want to thank you. I know it's a challenge, especially now, more than ever. I live in Charlottesville, Virginia, and I had the opportunity to meet Mrs. Bynum at a conference, and I was so impressed with the things that she shared with me about Rappahannock County Public Schools, and then had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Grimsley. We have been very fortunate to be working with Rappahannock County Public Schools, and we'd love to work with the county since 2019. I would like to give a quick overview of Pierce Group benefits. We are very different. We take a holistic approach to employee benefits. We first listen to the different issues and challenges that you're facing. We are experts in public sector. We only work in public sector. We know it's a different animal than private sector. And then, of course, we want to work in a partnership to help you attain your benefit goals, and that enables us to deliver solutions that you'll hear more tonight. We also design a comprehensive benefit plan that is not only competitive for your employees, but it helps them to feel valued. Not only do we provide health insurance, as Dr. Grimsley stated, and supplemental benefits, but FSA and all the different things that are even more important right now in times of COVID. At Pierce Group, we take things a step further, and we want to enhance the employee experience. We know that insurance is, can be very, very complex and confusing, and we want your employees to feel valued. We have created a custom website, which I will talk more about in a moment, but we have a multitude of employee resources that your employees and their spouses and dependents can access their benefits 24 hours a day. We have a mobile app, personalized benefit videos, onsite assistance. We have benefit counselors that come onsite, their former police officers, former firefighters and teachers that sit down and take a holistic approach to every employee. And then, of course, we have a service center that it's a little unusual because you call and somebody answers on the first or second ring. There's not a phone tree, and it's very user-friendly. I'd like to take a moment to talk about the personalized website that we have for Rappahannock County Public Schools. If you have your phones handy, and if you don't mind, I have a QR code that's going to take you right to the website that we created, that can have you experience what your employees view every single day. And I know these QR codes are popular. We're seeing them at restaurants nowadays. And I'm going to turn this over to Dee so she can talk about the solutions that she was able to bring to your school division. Thank you so much.
My name is Dee Byers, and I work with Pierce Group Benefits. I am the Senior Health Account Executive.
You might need to get closer to that mic.
You need to speak into the mic.
So, you may need to take it out of the band just to make sure.
There you go.
I'll take it out. To make it a little bit easier. Okay. This height thing, I'm still getting used to, and I haven't always been this tall. So again, my name is Dee Byers. I work with Pierce Group Benefits. I am the Senior Health Account Exec for Rappahannock Public, Rappahannock County Public Schools. I am responsible for some of the day-to-day activity you see. So what I'm going to talk a little bit about today is, as you can see, about your health plan renewal history and projections. My job is to look at those claims and look at the analysis of those claims and track the trend. And if I see something that goes on that's a little bit out of, you know, whack or whatever is going on, then my job is to find solutions and programs to help combat that. As you can see with Rappahannock, you can see from 1718, 1819, 1920, and even from October 20 to 21, the blue line is what the Local Choice projection. So every year on Rappahannock gets a renewal, and on that renewal, the Local Choice projects how much money they think Rappahannock County Public Schools will spend. The red line is where Rappahannock actually comes in. So as you can see, you guys have been trending very, very well. Over the 1718, they kind of got it almost right. 1819, they projected a little high. You came in under. And then 1920, you came in almost $700,000 under. That's a good thing, which means that you didn't spend that money out in healthcare. We want to contribute that, one. We want to give kudos to the central office for your wellness program that you implemented. We think that played a major role in the utilizations of the healthcare program. And also, we're going to talk about a little bit about the education of letting employees know what they have available. So we've been doing that by having lunch and learns, passing out flyers, and program management, and making sure employees understand how their benefit works, along with the colonial suite of products that we offer when we come out and do open enrollment. One of the other things we want to talk about is preventive care. Part of your utilization and the reason why your claims and utilization is so low is because we look and see that people are actually finding out what's going on with them before it becomes a high-cost claimant. So we want to make sure that we still encourage people to get those wellness visits. We do know with COVID, things were a little different last year, so people didn't really go like they were supposed to, but people were still keeping up with their health and making sure they were exercising, eating right, and trying to get outside and not have those high-cost claimants. We see that in your claims utilization, because you went from having like two high-cost claimants all the way down to one, to somehow not having any high-cost claimants at all. What we define as a high-cost claimant is any claim over $100,000. And Rappahannock stayed under that threshold for the whole entire year of last year, and you saw that reflected in the claims. Now, one other thing I really want to point out with those high-cost claimants, last year, you had $100,000 less in high-cost claimants from the previous year. Again, that is direct savings on your plan and the cost of healthcare for Rappahannock. Now, when we talk about preventative care participation, again, like I said, we want to encourage that. We also understand that with some of your employees, you have colonial products or supplemental benefits that's also beneficial. By employees going to get their preventative care, they also qualify for wellness credits. And during open enrollment, we remind those employees of those bonus credits, taking range from anywhere from $50 to $100, just money that we can send them in a check. And anytime anybody get free money, that's always a good thing, right? So we definitely want to keep encouraging that. So on the next slide, this slide is very important because as you remember, last year, we had a little bit of a scare with Valley Health Health Systems, which was a crazy thing to do, right? So Anthem and the Local Choice went into contract negotiations where they decided that, hey, we want to leave the network. When Pierce Group hear about things like that, we're on top of it because what that means is that's going to cost employees more money. It's going to cost you as a division more money, and we want to make sure we get ahead of it. So with central office, we were able to develop a communication plan, get the information out of employees just in case this happened. Thank goodness and the powers that be that Valley Health stayed in-network. By them staying in-network and we encouraging employees to use in-network providers, you will see that direct savings on that screen, and that's the reason we have that slide. So if you notice in 1920, most of the claims from Rappahannock were in-network. That total of savings of $1.1 million that saved employees and the school division by having employees go to in-network providers. In the 2021 year, you save $887,000 by encouraging employees to go in-network. So anytime we see providers trying to leave the network or have those negotiations, we start looking at other carriers to make sure that you're getting paid for your bucks and employees can save that money. So again, we talk a lot about education. So last year, we did talk about FSAs or flexible spending accounts. Some of you guys may be familiar with that. With the flexible spending account, Rappahannock was able to have employees engage and participate in that program to the tune of about $26,000. And the reason why that is important is because employees will have the opportunity to save tax-free. So when they put that money back tax-free, they can also spend it tax-free. That also saves money for the school division because you don't have to pay the employment tax on that money. Now, one of the things we want to do is make sure we're in line with the market and be cutting edge. So not only are we looking at flexible spending accounts, but we're also talking about maybe including that health savings account. So when we talk about renewal strategies and contribution strategies, we make sure that we bring everything to the table so we can have those discussions and find out what is going to be the best opportunity for the school district, not only for the school division, but also what's going to benefit employees and save things. So again, with the communication and education, some things that we have coming up, as you can see, we talked about the QR code, so that's something we, based on the feedback we got from COVID, where people like to have their phones, have things instead of having paper with them. And we're going to talk about nurse line because people are at home and they don't really want to go out and be exposed, so they can actually call a nurse on the phone. EAP services has been a real huge benefit lately with COVID and people dealing with having children at home or taking care of parents, or now they have to have a new normal of life. So these are some of the communication strategies that we have coming up that you will see that we want to make sure employees know what they have, and they're getting their biggest bang for their buck for their benefits. We'll also be doing communications about the Sydney mobile app so people can have access to their ID cards on their phone, and that way employees don't have to worry about trying to keep up with paper and find their EOBs, and they can have access right there in the palm of their hand. So we'll be doing education on that as well. So the last thing we want to say is thank you again for your partnership. We think Rappahannock County Public Schools is on the right track. The administration team, the central office, has been doing an amazing job, and I definitely enjoy working with Dr. Grimsley and Ms. Witt. And so again, Pierce Group Benefits, we do appreciate your business, and we look forward to continuing this partnership. So I'll stop there and see if you guys have any questions for me.
Questions? Anybody?
All good?
Very good.
Awesome. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much. Yes, we thought it'd be useful so you could see all the services that that choice made. And thank goodness, this year with the whole debacle with Anthem and Valley Health, because I remember that afternoon very late, right as I was walking out the door, we were ready to survey staff about providers and what they were going to do should this happen. And Dee called me up right before that I hit the button, and she said, "I've got good news," even before it was out there. So we knew and could peel back some of that, but thank you very much. Pierce Group, we're very, very pleased with the work we've gotten, and also the workload that it has freed up on staff that has been completely overworked by benefits processing with so many staff members and things. And just getting staff the quality of services and all these pieces and benefits available to them is so important. So it's been great. Item 3.2, capital improvement, comes up a lot at both meetings, so we thought this would be a great overview for you to see the progress made on capital improvement. So Dr. Bolt, our facilities extraordinaire, will give the update on capital improvement.
Good evening. First off, I want to thank the Board of Supervisors and the school boards for seeing the necessity for the need for capital improvement and to have a plan in place and to move forward.
We're going to have to talk into that.
Yeah, you're going to have to take a closer look.
Yeah.
Thank you all for everything. Shannon started superintendent, and then I came in and was given leadership for facilities. And so it was pretty evident that we needed to come up with a plan, figure out how much we needed, and then move forward. And the Board of Supervisors were very generous. In the year 2018, 2019, we were able to do the control system for HVAC here at our CES, mini-split for the cafeteria, the cooling tower, the nurses' office, a new unit in our auditorium, and then update our water treatment. If you remember, that year, we had quite a year trying to get through with the water treatment system we had, and so it was time for it to update. And then if we go to the next year, again, with funds, pay-go funds provided by the Board of Supervisors, we were able to re-tile the elementary school, the hallways, the cafeteria, reseal the bus loops, remodel classrooms at both schools, paint the gym in here, upgrade our sound system, and then redo our gym floor, and then the generous contributions from community members allowed us to do our courtyard. And then at the end of this year, 2020, within my budget, I had enough left over to go ahead and re-tile the high school hallways and the cafeteria and paint. So if you were this year, now, there was no pay-go this year, but we received funds from Department of Education, the Virginia Department of Education, which allowed our capital improvement plan to move forward. So we've sealed the parking lots at both schools. We're in the process of updating our PA system. The blue cords hanging down, that's where the cable's been pulled. They're coming in Friday to start installing the devices. Both PA systems at each school are original PA systems, which is amazing. You got your money's worth. We've already remodeled four classrooms. We've added HVAC to the portago at the high school, which had no AC or heat, so anyone that came in as a visitor was either hot or cold, but we were able to do CARES funds because there was no ventilation in there. We replaced the auditorium seating, and that would be CARES funds from the county that enabled us to do that by making it a learning space. We installed air duct scrubbers. If you look up there, you can see one. It's in the very top, and what it does, it's got a filter in there, and it produces a peroxide that actually cleans it, and then it has UV lights in it.
It's a thing with the blue, the blue indicators on it?
Yes.
Yep.
So those are done in all our duct systems. And then in classrooms that have mini splits, there really wasn't a place to put it because it ducks right out. We put portable air scrubbers in those areas. So if you go to the next slide, I broke it down by funds, about where the funds came from. And as you see, it's a distribution between the school funds, the county funds, community funds, and it just shows that when we work together and everyone pools, that we move forward. Now, what's next? So I don't know if anyone is aware of our boiler system at the high school. It's original to when the building was built, and it needs some maintenance. It needs controls put on it. It needs valves put in so that if there is a problem, you can cut off the water and not have to bring the whole system down. Again, we're going to move on with our classroom remodels, hopefully two at each school. Replace the bleachers at the high school. The VR system at the high school in the old wing, we're hoping to use CARES funds for that. And then we're going to start working on the process of redoing our doors, especially at this school, because we have some issues that we've repaired, 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 and now it's time to replace. 2223, we're continuing with our classroom remodels. Metal shop. It closed a classroom, so when it's 95 degrees outside, those students can go into that classroom, so we'll install a mini-split in that. So they have heat, but they don't have any air conditioning in that shop, which makes it very uncomfortable on some days. Continue with our exterior doors. We have a trailer at the high school that is falling apart, and it's time to take care of it. And that's our total 195,000. 2324, classrooms, the locker rooms, everything in there is original. The concession area, restrooms, everything in there is original. Continue with the replacement of doors here at the elementary school, and then repurpose the track. Now, where's this money come from? Oh, I'm sorry, there's one more here. And this is a placeholder because we're going to have to redo our sewer treatment sand pits at the high school because the requirements are changing about what the flue is that comes out of it, and our system won't meet those requirements. The flue will meet those requirements, but the sand pits won't. So I met with Pamela Parker, who does Rappahannock Water and Sewer, and the DEQ person, and said, "What's a rough estimate to get this done?" And they came up with a number of $200,000. And then, well, since it's such a big-ticket item, we'll still continue on with our doors. But this is the pleasant news. Since the Virginia Department of Education has allocated funds for capital improvement, which we foresee them continuing that in the future, we're able to cover 90% of these funds, which money's will get from that and from within the facility budget. 10% will come from the CARES Act, which will be doing the VRF system at the high school. So any suggestions or comments or questions?
I had one. I'm really thrilled that we have those filters, and I just wanted to understand, I know that in the past, like with water filters, there's been an issue that it can cost money that we need to budget in to keep them maintained. I mean, even after COVID, I imagine that we're going to have a better rate of just less absenteeism because we're just have cleaner air inside. I think it's going to be a wonderful thing. I just was wondering if that's like how that, is it expensive to maintain?
No, the filters in our, most of the classrooms, the ones especially on this wing and at the high school, have mini splits in them, and so the custodians, we've come up with a plan for them to go through monthly and clean them, and they're reusable. So we won't have to replace them but once a year. These will get done with our preventative maintenance with our comprehensive plan. These will get done with our primitive maintenance with our comprehensive plan. So it's, you know, eventually we're gonna have to replace them, but not in the foreseeable future. And I could see handling within the budget we currently have.
Okay, that's what it did for coming up. Great.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, just a few points of clarification. What does VRS, that acronym stand for?
VRF, it's a variable.
Refrigerant.
Refrigerant, oh, you asked me and I can't, and I just had the, just did a RFP on it. What it is, is it has compressors, heat pumps.
Microphone.
And those heat pumps do three or four classrooms. So it's more cost effective to do that than to put a unit in each classroom. And I will get you that answer, and I had it, but I'm blanking on it.
It's variable refrigerant flow.
Thank you, Gary.
And then I noticed that there are a few instances over the years in this past record and projection regarding classroom remodeling. What triggers a decision to remodel a classroom? And then second, what are the basic components of a classroom remodeling effort?
The classrooms are original from 1959, when they were built to high school, and here in 1969. So these classrooms have had no tile. They've had some paint. But so the remodel is, we re-tow the, and go over asbestos tiles, we encase them. It's much more cost effective to encase the tiles than it is to pull them out. We paint the rooms, replace the ceiling tiles. We add electrical outlets because in these classrooms and the ones at the high school, there's only two outlets in each classroom. When they were built, that was sufficient. But now with technology and charging, we also put an interactive monitor in each classroom to update it.
And furniture gets put in. And then it's, all the classrooms are on a cycle. So they're all getting periodically adjusted so that by the time the whole cycle's over, all the classrooms in both schools will be remodeled.
Okay. And then you mentioned the high school wastewater treatment facility. What about the elementary school and where does that stand?
The lagoon here is in good shape. We are meeting, we'll meet the requirements needed.
Okay.
We had some issues, but it was more of a dirty power coming in and blowing our three-phase where we had to replace some grounder pumps, that type of thing. But that's actually covered by insurance.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. Long live.
Thank you, Robyn.
So I came here as a sub, gosh, 15 years ago. And I can say just within the past four years or so, just the amount of progress that's been done in capital, just with this collaboration. And I appreciate Mr. Curry and his expertise in helping with that in the county. Just pooling funds together and looking ahead and really planning for the future because this has been amazing. And people walk into our schools all the time that have been, you know, years and years out and come in and say, wow, this looks like a brand new building, you know? So we thank you very much for that. Okay, budget building blocks. So this presentation is really to give a quick overview. I say quick, there's a lot of slides, but I will make it brief because this is pretty much the same presentation that I do give each year with all of the components, just as an education tool. Of course, our budget building process is ingrained in our vision and mission to empower every student to reach his or her full potential and promote a culture of learning, a roadmap for excellence, and the passion and character that leads to each student's success. The budget is our foundation for our comprehensive plan. It's the way we get things done. These are still our division goals, which may be revised after we examine the impacts of COVID and what's happened after the pandemic when we can kind of get the things back to normal. And that will be due anyway, I believe, in the coming year to revamp our comprehensive plan and look at strategic planning on that end. Key considerations we always look for is what the governor's budget and the House and Senate propose. We hoped to get a little better of an idea what the House and Senate committees were going to do Sunday, but that didn't happen. So hopefully later in the week, we'll get a better idea of what those crossovers will look like. Right now, the governor's budget, the biggest financial impact is usually what he proposes for SOQ increases or bonuses or such. And right now, it's a 2% bonus, which he's said repeatedly in state meetings with superintendents that it, that is very likely to convert to a 2% increase if projections in revenue look the same way in the state. So that's what the school board has planned to build our budget on as a baseline to start. So that's what we'll be looking at. Of course, enrollment, average daily membership, two key indicators. Retaining, recruiting talented staff is something we make sure we can do. Maintaining the integrity of our effective programs, capital improvement, and new state mandates. So those are all the things that we always have to keep in mind. We also did a community budget survey like we do each year just to kind of ascertain what the community felt was important in the school budget. Overwhelmingly, parents were the largest respondents to our survey. Looks like followed by teachers, school employees, community members, and students. So the top 10 list, year over year, 1920 compared to 2021, priorities changed. Teacher-staff salaries remained at the top. People are very adamant in the surveys that they do appreciate and love their teachers and the staff at the school. Last year, school safety was number two. This year, teacher-staff benefits. Small class sizes this year was very, very important. I think I know why. And then amelioration of COVID impacts, additional resources and staff came in at number four. Curriculum enrichment, number five this year. Six was distance learning Wednesdays that we take a look at wellness and whole child development on Wednesdays. You'll hear more about that during our session and calendar for the school board part of the meeting. Instructional supports, STEM, school safety, career and tech ed. So that's what the community said. The governor's budget right now, as proposed, again, is based on, once it gets to us through that lovely filter called the local composite index, which right now is at pretty much the highest you can get, was at 0.8. So it's 0.7996. The total difference projected in FY '22, if the governor's proposed budget is adopted, is negative 117,000. So as we start to build that in our state revenues, we're already starting in the red. And we do have an advocacy effort later that we'll talk about that may be partially due to no loss funding that hopefully we can maybe grapple with the House and Senate committees as they go through committee. Little bit about SOQ positions and how that's funneled through. The state gives us funding, sort of, of a portion of what we fund. So these are examples of what they cover. So it's 2.21 kindergarten teachers. Well, I can't hire 2.21 kindergarten teachers, so kind of have to have that extra person. So the state will offer funding of a state share filtered through the local composite index of 0.7996, and that's your state contribution. And that means the county has to come up with the rest of the local share.
SOQ standards of quality.
Standards of quality, sorry, SOQ. So that's just kind of an example. And I'll admit that I took these staffing ratios based on the last calculation tool, but we're still in the current biennium. So the new one on whatever will be adopted hasn't been in there. But I haven't seen much changes to the staffing ratios for the criteria here. So we take the criteria. This is how we plan our staffing and make sure we're equitable and we have enough instructional support at the schools. So we use the criteria with formulas that say, okay, here's the required staff. Here's how many students we have. How many do I need? What's required by SOQ? What do we actually have? And then what's the difference? So for instance, this one with teachers at the elementary school shows that we're down 0.7. So down about one staff. And then at the high school, same thing. You know, we run it through the criteria. Criteria shows you how many teachers you should have in each section and then the difference there. So total difference, 1.54 teaching staff. And then we look at an overall, and I have a worksheet that I use for all of the staffing too. So if you put in other staffing, then you get a total staff criterion that gives you an idea of where you are. So elementary, when you figure in the other staffing, we're down about four and a half staff. Not down based on vacancies or anything, just by what criteria should say that we should have for the numbers we have. But teaching staff, we're pretty right on. And that's the one you worry the most about because that's where your instructional services directly impact students. Other staffing could be support staff, aides, you know, nurses, secretaries, whatever, those pieces. So they're not as integral to, they're integral to your school operations, but just not as integral to the formula for revenue. Central office staffing. Several years ago, we had 15 FTE at central office. Right now, we have 10. FTE is full-time equivalent. Got you. So these are staffing. Some of those staff are paid for partially through grant funding. So we be sure, we are sure to use those funds as best we can to support all of the services that we offer. The state is getting a lot more strict on the number of reporting mechanisms you need to use. And all of the state reports are just atrocious. And when you're a small division, doesn't matter, you know, if you're a large division, small division, you have all of the same reports. But we don't have all those departments to do them all. So we all help each other out and try to get in as best we can. But it's also programmatic oversight. You have to follow protocols. You go through audits. You have state calls. So all of those pieces are so important. And I could, we could not be successful or maintain the operations we do without the staff. So next year, some cost projections for you. So the SOQ raises. Right now, in the governor's proposal, it says a 2% bonus or equivalent action that could be moved to a 2% increase should revenues make. And we've already said that a 2% or equivalent action is what we wanted to build on. So here's some scenarios on what that could look like. We could consider a step increase plus one, straight two on the scales. 2% bonus only, step only plus one. And I know these numbers look really wonky. And that's because we've already sent out intent forms and we know exactly, as far as right now, who's planning to retire, leave, and move into different positions. So this is realizing all of that within. So this is the cost projection of these scenarios that we'll be working with as we build our proposed budget. In our insurance, we are projecting a 2%. We're actually budgeting for a 6% increase as our carrier has told us to do. However, the local choice has said that they would issue a 4% credit to everyone in the pool because they did so well. So when you back out the 4%, that leaves you the 2% overall. So cost not incredibly high. This year, we've also, as we always do, teacher salary benchmarking to the median with local divisions, 10 comparison divisions. And we also look at the Virginia Ed Association salary studies for teachers. And this is where we stack up with surrounding districts and those that are comparable to us. We tend to even out as we move up the years. And that was very strategically done years ago. I know the board previous to me went through a vast Virginia Association of School Superintendents salary study, scale study. And that's where they indicated that because you had so many more teachers approaching certain years later in the scale, you had a lot of veteran teachers, it was good to benefit those folks at the end of the scale. Recruitment wasn't really an issue. You looked like you had a lot of longevity. That's shifting now. We're seeing a lot more retirements, those coming to the end. And as you look at our rankings, we're dead last on both the bachelor's and the master's scale. So what we're looking at, instead of revamping the entire scale, is doing some compression work in those areas where we know we want to recruit and retain. So in the zero to five area, we're looking at a compression. So you'll get closer to a five-year teacher salary at the get-go right from the start, but you won't see so many step increases as you go forward. And then kind of modify those as we go. And that should bring down some of the costs of making adjustments to the scale. And we were also looking at, we did a comparison of every salary scale we have and did the salary study as well. Just looking for any glaring areas where we were very insufficient in our compensation to staff. And there were a couple that did pop up that were going to do some adjustment work for those. Our custodians were one. Nurses were very low. Cafeteria workers. And there's some adjustments we have to make because the minimum wage is going up. It has to be $11 by January 2022. So some of that work we do have to try to accomplish to be sure we're meeting those guidelines. I wanted to give an update about preschool funding. This is exciting news. As you remember, when we came to the Board of Supervisors meeting a few years ago and said, oh, my gosh, Head Start went away a week before we're supposed to start. What do we do with these families that are the highest risk, highest poverty? And the Board of Supervisors came in when CCLC got up with us and said, we want to help. Let's find a place. And we came up with the first step collaboration. And we thank you so much for that because that advocacy work over the last three years has done some remarkable things. Unfortunately, we were not successful in getting Head Start back because our numbers no longer meet the criteria for bringing that particular program back. But what we did do was open up all of these other avenues of funding high-quality early education preschool funding. So for instance, Virginia Preschool Initiative, BPI, is now open for four-year-olds, and we'll see state funding for that. Three-year-old pilot funds that we're working with our private providers. There's a public provider add-on. And these funds offset costs for early childhood education in your childcare centers that operate preschool. Childcare assistance, this was a roadblock we were hitting because for so long, nobody was accessing through DSS our childcare assistance services. So that number was capped out. Now that we have been going and logging all those in when applications come in through a uniform process, that number is set to increase quite a bit. Early Head Start, we do qualify for. So we are able to receive funds that way. Childcare and Learning Center, CCLC, is working through People, Inc. Right now, we have a great shot at opening that door. So that's your younger population, and in the continuum, that will pay off later. And then our mixed delivery and preschool development grants. We did receive quite a bit of money through the state and Virginia Education Foundation to be able to do, early childhood foundations, sorry, to be able to study how you can improve quality preschool services together, working with community services and the childcare providers in your county. So a lot of great work came out of that, too. So maybe not the outcome we had planned, but not a bad deal either. These are much more sustainable resources and numbers that we meet the criteria on. So BPI, for instance, you don't need to be under the 100% poverty line. You can go up to 150 and then have 15% of local criteria that go up and not maybe figure in income at all. So we can have local at-risk criteria in which we can accept BPI students. And that goes for any providers that work with us, too. So exciting news about that. A word about enrollment and average daily membership. This is the trend that we've had for a while. Definitely going down, down, down. And then the last couple of years, finally, it looks like we're starting to plateau. So it looks like we're finally getting to a point where we might stabilize ADM, which is very important for funding and also very important for our schools because we want that enrollment there. But how does that impact funding across the years? So here's a comparison. On the left axis, you'll see money in millions. That's what that is. And then on the right axis is, the Y-axis is your ADM through the years. And then you see the yellow bars are your county contribution of funds to the school district. And your total budget is the blue bar. Okay? And then ADM is the line graph to show you where the funding is. Typically, your ADM is going to be sort of in the middle of your total budget and your county contribution. And we've done a whole lot of work over the past several years to try to minimize as best as we could the county contribution with other sources of funding to better reconcile with the ADM and enrollment loss, right? Because that's what you need to do and that's the right thing to do. But what's that look like in totals? So since 2013, that's where your county contribution was, 9.1 million, about there. Your ADM was at 910. Current funding rate, 8.6, and your ADM at 780. So your local contribution right now is $474,000 less than the county funding level was in 2013. So when we're saying the county contribution hasn't gone up, it really hasn't. We've done a lot of work to try to maintain that. So your county contribution is at your FY '14 funding level. But the bottom line looks higher, right? Because the whole school budget has gone high. So we hear a lot of that at those monies. So if the county contribution is so low, then why is that bottom line so high? Lots of reasons for that, right? So state and federal funds make up another almost $4 million. So state and federal funds make up another almost $4 million that come into the state, to the school budget. And then a lot of locally obtained grants, okay? Because we have a lot of things that we want to do to be of service to the community and to our families. So we do a lot of collaboration with local organizations to be able to get those funds. Here's just a few over the past couple of years. So like the mixed delivery preschool development. Although those funds did not directly impact the school, they have an indirect impact on the learning continuum when those preschoolers come into the school system with a better early childhood foundation. Northern Piedmont Childhood Foundation childcare expansion. We did a lot of work with that to try to make sure our essential workers had an option for their children when they had to go to work, and there was nothing else when the schools closed back in March. Wellness Center feasibility study, we received a grant, $69,000 for that. A staff wellness grant to really try to take care of our staff, offer supports, and keep morale boosted during this crazy time where we're all working so hard. That was $100,000. Verdun, we offered an alternative for school-aged children to be able to go to the Verdun Adventure Bound. So if they couldn't be in school, didn't have a childcare option, we found grant money to support them so they did have an option available. Wonderful Wednesday, second semester was another grant. Family Futures in Headwaters helped support our My Future Program through a grant to fund a full-time position. Commit to Be Fit, that's a big one with $300,000 almost a year, and we're in year five of that, and that's indefinite. So we receive a lot of these funds going after those so we can better be of service to our community. We are the closest thing that this county has to a community center. So that's the goal when we do these things. But they also benefit our staff and students as best we can to meet those goals. Rural schools coalition update. We, if you remember, last year, we signed a joint resolution to send on to really support some of these funding sources, like at-risk add-on and infrastructure operations. Those things made it into the budget. So we did see additional revenues from that. So thank you. That's part of the monies that Robin was talking about, Dr. Bowles was talking about with capital. And that looks like in the foreseeable future, that will be available for infrastructure and operational use. Enrollment loss versus no loss is kind of a, it's great that that's in there, but that's something we'll talk about, a call to action in just a second. So all these things did make it in there, but then, because of COVID happened, a lot of those funds were peeled back and unalotted to wait and see. Some of those have been put back in. Additional funds for at-risk add-on, we may see. All the VPI funding made it back in. So we were able to access that this year. So that was wonderful. And that's even projected in our CALP tool right now for next year. So the call to action, we need to tell the bureaucrats up on the Hill that there are no-loss funding formula right now. The CALP tool is inequitable, as some, a lot of those things tend to be. In this case, what the no-loss funding calculation is doing is using a projected average daily membership to project out what you should receive in your no-loss, which seems great to, you know, school districts who've lost a lot of enrollment and things on those projections, but for us, we haven't. In the case of the pandemic, that sort of helped because we stayed open, and we did not see the mass exodus of students. So what we're asking for is actual calculation of actual enrollment to show that we didn't lose, so no, there's no loss there. So right now, the way it's using actual versus projected is costing rural school districts with more poverty a lot more money. And this no-loss formula calculation will only cost about $20 million, the overall state budget, but it gets equitable funding for everyone. But it's not just using that one. It's actually using the better of either. So if your actual looks better, then that's the benchmark used. If your projected looks better, then that's the benchmark used. So either way, but no district should lose. That's the point of a no-loss formula is that you don't lose money. For us, that would make a difference of about $25,000, but still money from the state will get every cent we can. But it's also the principle of inequitable funding formulas that we want to let them know about. So I do have a joint letter drafted from that handout. See if I can pull it up here. Just to the members on that Senate Finance Committee and the House Appropriations Committee that are reviewing that this week, just to let them know that we do feel that that's more equitable to our, to our funding formulas, that we have to keep on them about those pieces that continually peel that money back from rural districts.
So Dr. Grimsley, this is attached to the school's version of board docs, but I don't know that everybody has it in front of them. Perhaps you or somebody else could read the letter to allow both boards to fully understand what it says.
Absolutely. Okay. So the letter is a Joint School Board and Board of Supervisors Letter to Support Fair Enrollment Benchmark Formulas for No-Loss Funding for Small and Rural School Divisions. It's a long title. And then it has the members of the House Appropriations and the Senate Finance Committee. And it says, Honorable Members of the General Assembly, the Rappahannock County School Board and Board of Supervisors are writing this joint letter to ask for your strong advocacy to address the issue of an unfair enrollment benchmark formula currently being proposed to provide school districts no-loss funding. We strongly support the protection of no-loss funding in the state budget. However, the current calculation structure for ascertaining enrollment to apply the no-loss funding dispersment is flawed and not equitable. While we appreciate the provision to ensure school districts do not lose funding based on COVID-related enrollment loss, the proposed calculation for this funding is based on projected enrollment rather than actual enrollment numbers from March 2020 pre-pandemic. Using projections rather than actual spring enrollment decreases net support for rural schools and schools with the highest poverty rates. Using this calculation is problematic and unfair to small and rural districts for the following reasons. School districts with the highest share of students living in poverty lose approximately $5 million with the current no-loss enrollment benchmark compared to using actual spring enrollment numbers, while districts with the lowest poverty rates gain the most from the current method. Rural schools and the Coalition of Small and Rural Schools of Virginia lose out on more than $10 million through the use of projections rather than actual spring enrollment. Rural divisions have already been disadvantaged due to substandard broadband access. 83 out of 133 school divisions will fare better using actual spring enrollment as a starting point in FY21. The Rappahannock County Board and School Board and Board of Supervisors urge the General Assembly to protect school budgets, preserve the no-loss funding as proposed in the governor's budget, and use the best of the two benchmarks for each school division so that we all achieve equity and truly hold all divisions harmless. There are winners and losers from using either of the two calculations, but by taking the best of the two, lawmakers will improve upon equity in the calculation by providing additional support to high-poverty and rural schools, which in aggregate had slightly higher actual enrollment compared to budget projections for FY21. The net cost to offer this more equitable approach is just over $20 million for the current fiscal year, which is a relatively small amount compared to Virginia's recently upward adjusted revenue forecast. We do not have to pick winners and losers with the benchmarks. Help our struggling schools by applying the better benchmark of the two for all divisions. Respectfully submitted, February 9, 2021. And then there's a line for both chairs to sign, and then myself and Mr. Curry, if you so choose to send that on.
It's our intention to get the favor of the board to support the letter this evening and sign it so that we can send it out. So I would ask, at this point, if there's a motion from the school board to, in support of the letter.
I saw a motion.
We have a motion, Ms. Bynum. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Groves. Is there any discussion? On favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, no? It's ordered.
And I would like to do the same with the Board of Supervisors. I entertain a motion to support the letter for fair enrollment benchmark formulas.
So moved?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I think it's a great proactive approach to keep that money flowing. And thank you to everyone for going ahead and taking initiative to send the letter.
I think it's a pretty good approach, but I would have rather had had the letter earlier to look at it. It's very difficult to hear, so I really don't know what you read.
I apologize. I can do it again.
I won't ask that tonight.
I apologize. We had it up, but yeah. They need additional time to review.
Have a motion and a second. Close discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Fraser, would you like to read this before I sign it?
Would have liked to have read it before we voted.
Right. The next item is a budget overview from the county, and I believe that's Mr. Curry's.
What are we going to talk about?
Oh, questions about what I do, oh, sorry. Yes. Do you have any questions about the budget building blocks? I'm sorry.
I can't, if you can go back to your graph on salaries. I can't help but think that we are in a precarious position being at the bottom of the pile when we're hiring new teachers. It's my experience that most new teachers will come to us with a master's degree now because most of the education programs are five-year programs. So I think we need to, and we will probably be hiring a few folks this year, we need to think about our initial salary for teachers. And that if I'm a teacher, if I'm new, and I go down the list, and Rappahannock pops up at 41, and everybody else is at 45, I could go everywhere else.
Right. And that's why.
And that's a concern I have.
Exactly right. And that's something we notice very closely, especially this year where we know we're going to be doing more recruiting. So what you will see in our updated scale is a compression between the zero and five.
Right.
So you'll update that first starting year to be closer to the five, but you won't see as much of an increase each year until you get to that point and see a bigger jump. They'll still get something, but in looking at a lot of surrounding district scales, that's exactly what they do, too. It's a way to attract and not, you're not spending over years with big increases by the steps, but you're also compressing it so they get closer to a five-year salary starting out. They just don't get a whole lot more until they get to that five-year mark and then a jump.
But initially, we'll get.
Exactly.
A bit more.
So the first step you'll see is going to be closer to the five-year mark with that compression done for those, that area, because that's where we know we're going to need to recruit. So you'll see compression work and not adjustments over the entirety of the scale, but compression's where we need it.
If I could, Dr. Grimsley, that's saying that the scale isn't actually what you go by?
The scale currently, it is.
So you hire at that rate, the very first, the very first step is what you hire at?
It is.
With a first-year teacher.
I'm sorry?
With a first-year teacher.
With a first-year teacher. This is difficult. I think the mask affects my hearing.
I don't think so.
Anyway, so, but you're saying that even though you show five steps between hiring and five years, you don't actually abide by that?
No, right now, we do. When we update our scale for next year, what you'll see is an adjustment in our scale. So step one, instead of being at, like for a master's right now, step one is at 44, 853. It would be closer to the 48 mark for the five-year master's salary person. It would be closer to that with fewer steps in between to get you to the five years. So it's very similar cost to the division, but it's a more attractive beginning rate. So next year, step one will start higher.
I'm probably the longest-lasting individual on all these bodies here, but I mean, we've seen this every year. It's like, we're presented with this every year that you're the lowest, but you never change that. And, and, you know, it hasn't been your problem. I mean, you've been working in it and around it, and now you're working with it and trying to change it. But it's, it's the same thing that's been presented to the Board of Supervisors every year, that Rappahannock County schools is the lowest starting teacher salary in the area, but they never change it. Is it, is it there just so that it's a talking point?
Well, as you change it, the cost goes up. So we try to keep costs down, so if you make major changes to your teacher salary scale, which is the bulk of your instructional budget, 80% of your instructional budget gets directly impacted from that. So if we were to make major adjustments to that scale in either way, you're going to see that funding source go up because you're adjusting the scale so much, and then all the people impacted by that based on their salaries and years' experience. So in previous years, we've had so many people on the upper end of the scale. So as you make those adjustments with raises and whatever increases that you do, then it takes away your ability somewhat to do some of that work. And also, previously, we hadn't had the need. With a turnover rate of one or two a year, it wasn't exactly where we needed to focus so much. Now we're seeing that shift. So as we see a lot more veteran teachers starting to retire, I think we have almost 10 this year, which is higher than we've seen it ever. We're going to have a need to recruit. And add that to that effect is the pandemic problem of recruiting. Recruiting fairs aren't open, so the recruitment efforts we're going to have to do to go out and get qualified people are going to be more difficult. So we're going to need that initial gotcha number because we're not going to be there in person to be able to say, hey, but here's all the other great things about Rappahannock County. Come here. So that's going to be a piece. But by compressing, rather than reworking the entirety of the scale, you're compressing just the zero to five because that's in the year where you're getting those beginning teachers. So that's where you'll see the bulk of the work. Lot less expensive, less like, less impact, but it has a major impact on recruitment.
We, may I? Sorry. We also have to recognize that when we do a 3% raise, Buck Year might do a 7% raise, and Warren County might do an 8% raise. So it's, it's kind of keeping up, trying to keep up, and still stay within the dollar limits that we're able to spend for salaries. It's a competition. Everybody's out to get the best of teachers. And we do, we do try to make sure that candidates are aware that their take-home, what they're actually going to pocket is going to be greater in Rappahannock County than some of these competitors, that the starting salary looks higher, but because of the way the benefits are constructed, that they don't. So we're conscientious about that if we have the opportunity to market ourselves that way. But typically, you don't get past the initial number. I did, I did have a different thing I wanted to mention, Dr. Grimsley, and that's this, I want to make sure people know that, and she kind of glossed over this, this grants page, but you have to know that, that Dr. Grimsley, I asked her last year before we went into her assessment cycle about how much money, because she's a grant-writing machine. Can you, can you guys hear me in the back okay? She's a grant-writing machine. And since she's been in the position she's in, she's brought about a little bit less than $2 million into our county for all of these things that are very surgical and very targeted programs for our students. And so we have, I'm sharing that with you so that we don't just take these types of things for granted. Dr. Grimsley's been a valuable asset with these creative ways of getting funding. I want to make sure we recognize that.
I have a question. Salaries, one thing, but the health insurance that we offer to our students, isn't that better than some of the other counties?
Exactly. So we do offer competitive benefits, and with a subsidy that we have employer contribution toward a single subscriber at a zero amount contribution to employee. We also have subsidies available for those other, like spouse plus one, family plans and such. Now, our group, our work with Pierce Group has been really to look way ahead to make sure we can have a sustainable model, to make sure those stay competitive. So when we're talking about these HSAs and FSAs and trying to incentivize moving to a higher deductible plan with a lower employer contribution, we then have other grants that we may be able to make credits into those kinds of accounts to incentivize, and they do roll over. So that's kind of a longevity approach. However, we haven't needed to make too many adjustments because our health insurance plans have stayed stacked. We have not seen any increases. If we don't see one this year, it'll be our fifth year in a row with no increase. So we've realized that as a division, it saved $1.4 million in four years in county increases. So with our focus on wellness and our Commit to Be Fit program, that has saved a huge amount of money. So we're trying to stay competitive, but very mindful trying to keep that contribution low and make sure we offer the best we can, just being mindful, we want the most sustainable model so we can keep it that way, too.
I don't think we can advertise the contribution that we put in for healthcare as part of the salary per se.
No.
No.
Which puts us in a, which puts us in a hole to start with.
We brief the package. When we have opportunity, we're marketing the package, not, not just the salaries. If we ever get that far in the conversation, that's the problem.
That is a concern, just we need to get to that point of the conversation. And I'm, I have.
And I have, I just feel like people scroll through listing after listing, people apply to dozens of places. And I just would like us to really strategically look at how we're going to recruit, if there's other ways we can recruit, other online recruiting tools, because it's, it's a, you know, as you know, it's a changing world. And we, you know, you can't overemphasize the impact that a teacher individually has on keeping our average daily membership up or increasing it. It's just, you know, it's those relationships that we're so strong on as a small division. We need to have a good-sized pool of applicants to fill these, you know, so many dear, I'm going to cry. So many dear people are leaving our system. We need good people to replace them.
We need great people, and you can't replace what we're losing. I know what you're saying. So we do have great people leaving. We are already registered for several online recruitment fairs. However, that's going to go. At least we're not going to have to watch that big Loudoun County Fairfax line go out the door and be like, hello, over here. But, so we're going to try that way. But here's a great thing that happened this year. During the pandemic, it was an awesome opportunity for Rappahannock to really shine. And we were an exemplar for the state, not only the state, but the nation. We had the Secretary of Education Assistant come to our school to showcase across the nation how you can reopen schools. So work got out, and we did have a lot of positive PR that way. And our teachers were talking to their friends in other districts who are struggling, and they don't feel safe because they don't have the ventilation system, they don't have PPE, they don't have the dust shields, they don't have things that made them feel safe to teach in person. We did all that through our collaboration right from the beginning. So our teachers did feel safe to come in and do what they did. So I'm hopeful that that word of mouth will draw some people in to say, hey, that might be a district I want to go to.
Translate the quality, right?
I hope so. That's what we're, I'm optimistic.
I think Mr. Whitson has a question.
On the cell phone screen.
That's Holly's expertise.
Mr. Whitson?
Thank you for your presentation. This is very much an elephant in the room question, and it's one that I've discussed with you privately before. In talking with constituents, there's a feeling that this level of funding of the school system, when compared to declining enrollment, is illogical and difficult to explain. And just looking at this county contribution history slide in your deck, it looks like, at least from my perspective, the one logical trend is that the local funding in the last two fiscal years is declining somewhat in step with the decline in student enrollment. However, the overall budget number has actually increased from the 18, 19 fiscal year through 1920 and then 2021. And I know it's never an easy answer, but it's a question that I constantly hear from constituents. How is it that our student enrollment continues to decline, yet our funding of the school system continues to increase? Is there a simple answer, or is it, I mean?
Well, and that's what I was attempting to answer with these slides, was that the county funding-
One other thing I want to mention, and then I won't interrupt you. And then the next slide, county contribution table from 1314 through 2021. Says the local contribution is down $474,000 from the fiscal year 2014 county funding level. During that 1314 fiscal year to 2021 fiscal year, we see a 15% decline in student enrollment, 15%. If you use that as the variable on which to base reduced local funding, you would expect that local funding would be down $1.3 million, which would be 15% of the 9 million in 1314. So again, it's the same trend where even at a local funding level, we're really squeezing up against that student enrollment line that you suggested should be somewhere in the middle of local funding and overall budget. So I guess they're interrelated questions. I'd appreciate anything you can provide tonight.
Absolutely. Good question. So, and that's one we get a lot. So that's why these graphs were there. So basically, assuming that that formula could be used just on general funding, assumes that the costs haven't gone up either. So costs don't stay the same, you know, comparatively. So costs go up, you're funding schools at higher levels, the cost for contracted services, those things are up from 1314, of course, and rates of pay. So you have to figure in those pieces. Our enrollment, and that's in my budget report, I should have put a slide on here too. ADM is not what we actually serve. Average daily membership are those physically present that you give instructional service to on an average daily membership basis in your building. So average daily membership does not take into account any of your outplace students, anybody in the ISAP or GED programs, anybody that's been in foster care, anybody. So we're still responsible for all those kids' educational services.
What's that additional number in the aggregate? Would you guess is another 50 or 16?
I'd say another 25.
Another 25?
Yeah, at least given year. So when you have all those pieces, and I do have a slide, it's usually right around 800 is where we kind of study on the student academic records that we're responsible for in either way. So that won't be calculated in your state funding. So that's where they use ADM, and that's why we use that to kind of offset that, to show you where that is. But the county contribution line is fairly low considering, I think it's about 11,000 per pupil if you figure it out that way, which is still really low considering other counties spend about 13 to 14 on average. So what you're spending is, I think, a good deal for what you're getting in the small school, honestly, for the county. And then all the other dollars that we get are from grants that we go after to provide services. Because we're not just a school district for our families, we do a lot for the community as well. And that's a goal of ours in our comprehensive plan.
One of the things that's a little misleading on the county contribution history chart is it shows the county contribution in the total budget. And that doesn't give you a perspective of the state funding. If Dr. Grimsley showed you the trend of the state funding, you would see that even on a per-pupil basis, it's, we've really struggled, and the state just hasn't stepped up. And when the state doesn't step up, there's only one other place for the money to come from, and that's the local. And so if it were broken down that way, I think it would give a little bit more perspective. The total chart includes the grants that Dr. Grimsley mentioned. And so it looks to skew things a little bit on a percentage basis.
Correct.
Does the local funding show any additional monies the county may get, pay toward maintenance that's not necessarily shown in the?
It should. The local funding would include that, those paths through dollars that the board provided for pay-go for the capital, for cares that came through, things like that.
Mental health, yep.
If I could, just, I hate to step on somebody else's toes, but I had a question I'd like to ask before I forget. What is your ADM projection?
We're looking to stabilize at 765 for actual ADM this year and next year.
765?
765, and that's what we're projecting our budget on for next year.
Okay, and I saw class sizes. So what is actual class size and what is projected class size?
Right now, with COVID class size, we tried to max at 10 for social distancing. But typically, we look at a criteria between 16 and 18. With your lower grades, they have, like for preschool, 13 to 16 is what you don't want to max out on for instructional. For different, for reading instruction classes, six through eight, you can't have more than 24 students in a class. So we have certain maxes that we can hit in those. So that's what we use. We use state criteria. Our average class size typically is about 16 to 18.
On a positive note, I'd have to say that surrounding county schools have probably lost a lot of students to private schools and other options that they have. So the loss that I'm seeing here, the decline that I'm seeing here, to me, it could have been much worse.
If projections had followed, that's what we, we're an anomaly this year because we did offer in-person options. We actually did have other folks coming in to try to apply to come here for in-person options. And some we couldn't, you know, accommodate because of class sizes and such. But I know our neighbors in Buckier lost 800 students to private and homeschool. So that's a significant budgetary impact. We didn't, we lost less than 1% of our student body. In fact, 84% of our students right now are receiving in-person in some form, which is much higher than anyone else, I think, in the state.
I would like to point out that I've recently met people that are moving into the county specifically to enjoy the school system here. And so maybe this ADM might go up a little faster than you think.
Actually, I got an email today from a couple that are planning on, they have two children, and they're ready to talk to the school about enrolling. They're not in school now, but they're talking about next year. As far as the elephant in the room, I've had to have that same conversation over the years. And the things I come down to are, you know, the buses still have to roll. The buildings, the lights have to be on, the heat has to be running, the waters, the facilities still have to operate. Food still has to be cooked. And if you took 100 students away, it's not like, you know, you can get rid of a second-grade teacher. It doesn't, the math doesn't work out that way. And I used to say, you know, when, when my kids were leaving home, I'm still living in that house and heating it. It was not my, it's not my idea to continue to stay in that, the house that my kids grew up in because I don't need it. But that's where I'm living, you know, and it also wasn't prudent as the children were leaving to get rid of a parent. So that was a joke. So, so because I was, because the parent-to-student ratio was not, so that was a joke. Anyway, there are reasons why this infrastructure has a certain cost to it. I'm sure that you, that you're able to reason through that, and I think I've had to reason through that in the past as well. But we do, you know, we're conscientious about what we're trying to do. We reshuffle staff when we lose positions to make sure that we're the most efficient that we can be with the staff that we are trying to hire. That's why you'll see them with multiple certifications so that we have, we maximize our flexibility. So I believe we're trying to be as conscientious with what we've been given as we can to maintain this environment in the center of our community.
Right, and that's an important point. We have incentivized additional certifications for teachers, especially at the high school level. No longer are we just hiring Singleton, you know, certified teachers for like earth science. You can only teach earth science. I don't have enough sections for a full-time earth science teacher. But we, if you're multiple endorsed, you can teach multiple subjects, different sections. So we have multiple teachers that have gone forward and gotten that incentive to be sure they're duly endorsed or multi-endorsed, which has saved us on multiple occasions too, to offer different options for our, for our kids without increasing staffing. So that's a method that we're using, using Title II funding for those incentives. So again, that comes from the Federal Government for Professional Development. So that's one strategy being used.
And Mr. Mills and Dr. Grimsley, I've always been quick to sing Dr. Grimsley's praises. And she taught me this concept of dual-qualified or dual-certified instruction. And so I recognize that you understand fully the perspective of our tax-sensitive citizens, and I'm grateful for that. But still, these are tough questions that we all have to wrestle with. I appreciate the comparison to your household. That helped me a lot.
Yeah, it's not going to fly.
But yeah, don't, I don't want to sound too grumpy here, so thank you for all you do. But, you know, I'll continue to ask those questions going forward.
It's a good question. Any other questions for Dr. Grimsley? Lauren?
Okay. Lauren? All right, Mr. Curry, your turn.
This is very early in our budget cycle, and I hate to give away too much too early. We need to keep you all interested and excited as we move towards my introduction of a budget on March 10th, I think it is. But it did take a minute to look through some of the major budget inputs drivers as I saw them right now. And before I read anything on this chart, which is posted to Board Docs, an item that's not listed and which I wrote down during Dr. Grimsley's, actually, Dr. Bolt's presentation, is that the schools won't be asking for any pay-go capital. And so that's a big budget driver. That's something that the board worked hard to try to provide over the last few years, and not this current year because of COVID, to help make sure these facilities, which are community facilities and used by the community in good shape, and make sure they last a long time, particularly roofs and things like that. And so now that the schools have a survivable, hopefully, funding source from the state that doesn't filter through the LCI, right? So it's a great source of revenue from the state. Anytime, any revenue that doesn't filter through the LCI is one that we love.
Yes.
Because we get 100% rather than 20%. So that's a huge input and one that will definitely factor into my proposed budget coming up and hopefully relieve some other burdens. So with that said, off the top, the board of supervisors commissioned a classification compensation study leading into last year's budget from Baker Tilly. And unfortunately, due to the budget realities of the current fiscal year due to COVID-19, it was put on the shelf. My proposed budget had funding included for it, but there was just not enough comfort that revenue would be realized. And so that was put on the shelf, and the funding that was dedicated for that was actually shifted over to other purposes. Health insurance, we heard about earlier. The schools have enjoyed a long period of time with no increases. And Dr. Grimsley mentioned a local choice providing that 4% reduction. And for us, that leads to about a 1% reduction. So we must have been in line for a 3% increase, and now we'll net out at a 1% reduction. That's essentially flat for all practical purposes with the size of our employee pool. We're in the second year of a two-year cycle for VRS, both the county and the school. So we know that will be flat, at least going into this year. So it's a known, that's good. No surprises there. We do have, we will have the second half of the six-year cycle reassessment hitting this budget again. And so that's $90,000 or so. The first half of that is in this current year budget. The second half will have to be in FY '22. So that's something we know we need to structure in. Always unknown is the regional jail, or a risk is regional jail expenses. Those are stabilizing, and it looks like we should see a small reduction there. And that's largely because that facility continues to work hard. The superintendent up there is renting bed spaces to our neighbors like Page County and Culpeper. And every dollar those localities pay is a dollar that we don't pay as a member. So we're hopeful to see that reduce and provide some budget capacity for other things, perhaps, like the compensation study. The sheriff has requested another patrol deputy, so that's something the board is going to have to think about. Fully burdened, that's, you know, in the 90-some-odd thousand-dollar range. So is that something that we can fit into the budget? The board already made the decision to convert the part-time emergency services and management coordinator to full-time. That will fully burden in next year's budget. We're in the process right now of selecting a person. But you will have to build that into your budget next year. I guess probably the largest impact could be the paid EMS program. So you did set aside some funding for that in the current fiscal year, recurring funding. And I suspect that that recurring funding will have to be supplemented next year to fully fund a program. We'll know a little bit more about that as we move through the next several months. But those are some significant costs, and it'll have a lot to do with whether we can manage a program with what, a mixture of part-time and full-time EMS providers that will include, and how we're going to provide that coverage. But that is a big budget cost for the county. Last year, I tried to expand the availability of pay-go or pay-as-you-go capital with recurring funds for our capital needs. That was taken off the table due to COVID-19. With the discussion of the capital revenue source from the schools being available, maybe that's an item that we can keep on the back burner. Yeah, if there are, if there is capital money coming from the state, and the board doesn't have to pass any capital funding over to the schools for maintenance and upkeep, then that's an area where we can probably make do with about a penny's worth of tax dollars, $150,000 a year for our pay-go capital to make sure we're taking care of roofs and windows and paint and all those sorts of things. But we do have some significant capital needs coming up. things. But we do have some significant capital needs coming up. The building committee for the county has been working on commissioning a concept design study for a new facility. Look at different options for a new facility for the county. Those costs are only going to accelerate over time if the board decides to take a path that leads to a new building. So, we need to start planning for that. We've had some conversations about the timing relative to the current school bonds that we have. There's a couple more years left to pay on one of those, the last school bond. So, if we can get things to line up, then maybe we don't borrow any money that would require us to start paying debt service until the current debt service is expired. And if we can line that up timing-wise, then the impact to the citizens should be less significant. And lastly, right now, and it's very early, I'm expecting our revenue picture to be flat from the last couple of years. This year is such an anomaly, it's hard to predict anything from this year. But I'm not expecting, or I don't plan to forecast much of a revenue increase going into next year from equal tax rates. So, after I put all this together, I'm not sure where we're going to be relative to a balanced budget. Just to say that there are many, many inputs, and there's a lot of work left between now and the 10th of March. And I'll be anxiously awaiting the budget from the schools, and what the significant decrease that you want to recommend that the board needs to fund. With Jimmy retiring, you know, it's probably cut the principal salary in half or something. That's all I've prepared for you today. I did list on the next page the schedule of the budget meetings coming up. And I know you can't read that there, but it is available in Board Docs. The public should stay engaged with this. It's, it's the community's budget. It's largely the, the Board of Supervisors strategic plan for a year is the budget. So, goes the budget is, is the direction the county goes. So, it's important to be involved in that. I'm happy to answer any questions, but probably not with much detail.
I had a question about the health insurance premiums. I know last year, there were some ideas about restructuring the premiums, who pays and what. And they were not very well received with them staying flat this year. Are we going to do it the same way we've done in previous years?
Well, you know, I, I took a swing at trying to restructure things last year. It didn't go very smoothly. And my inclination is I'd rather not hit my hand with that hammer again, unless the board wants me to.
I was going to say, I think it might be a very wise year to not restructure our health insurance premiums. I know there's a lot of other projects going on, and I think that time could be better spent on other items. Thank you, Mr. Curry.
Mr. Curry did mention this calendar, this calendar, the schedule. And we had discussed the potential of joining April the 5th, having another joint meeting like this one, where we would arrive for the evening, the school board would arrive for the evening meeting in case there was any, of course, by this time, the board has already delivered its, its budget to you. But in case there were any questions, it would be an opportunity to outbrief, answer any questions about that at the April 5th, 7:00 PM meeting, which I assume is here.
So, the board's regular meeting on April 5th, that'll be essentially the last meeting the Board of Supervisors has before I have to advertise in the paper the budget that will go before the public for public hearing and the rates. So, right now, you, the two boards have an opportunity to influence Dr. Grimsley and I on the budgets that we introduce and from which you, you work. And then, if you were to meet again, April 5th may make a good time when the board is already scheduled to meet. We could, the board could plan to do it here, or the high school, if we're able to be squeezed together, I don't know, to influence what is advertised for public hearing, if there are any last changes that are desired there. It's really no huge impact to the board, because you will be, Board of Supervisors, you'll be meeting anyway that night. That would just be the school board may convene in the evening portion of your meeting, if that's something that makes sense to the boards.
Right. So, we'll, we'll plan according to that. And if it becomes unnecessary, you'll let us know.
Any other comments?
Any questions from the board?
I just think back to the days before, we had a lot of these joint meetings. And I think they're such a healthy exercise. I think the more that we can do and get together and communicate and coordinate our, our budgets, the more successful we'll all be. So, I would, I would look forward to any opportunity to have a joint meeting.
All right. At this time, we're going to open the public comment period. If you have anything you'd like to speak to, if you please raise your hand. Yes, sir. I see you. Let's get you up there. And if you'll tell us your name and which district you're in, that would be excellent.
Thank you. Robert Burney from Sparville. I was perusing some school budgets, looking forward in the future, and noticed that-
Get closer to the mic. Oops, sorry. They can't hear you. Can you move closer?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
There you go.
Are we all right now?
I'm sorry.
Last name is Burney, B-U-R-N-E-Y.
He's just raising up.
Look at that. Restructured. Thank you.
Thank you. Wow. Power, huh? Anyway, I saw that you were planning to purchase a generator for the high school for emergency power. And looking into this further, I discovered the high school is a emergency center and does need a reliable power source. And I've had some experience with building my house here and emergency power options, and also as a healthcare provider and working and managing healthcare facilities, which are required to have effective emergency power systems. So, I thought I would share some thinking on that subject. We were presented with two options for the house personally. Oh, I forgot to add, I also worked as a surveyor for the joint commission. So, I reviewed hundreds of healthcare facilities and their emergency power systems, and I saw some creative solutions for that. Anyway, we were offered two solutions for my house. One was a generator, and the other was solar panels. And the generator was a simpler option, so everybody understood that. But we were concerned about the visual impact of having a generator sitting in our side yard and a fuel tank. It's noisy when it runs and pollutes the air with the exhaust. There's maintenance and repairs to those. The facilities where I've worked, they required testing at least weekly. You had to turn the thing on just to make sure it was still operating. And that running period was of no value to the facility. It just had to run, use fuel. So, and it only produces power when it's running. Otherwise, it's just sitting there. The solar panels, on the other hand, which we did, and I would think more of it as batteries rather than the panels. And the panels charge the batteries. They run all the time, whenever the sun shines. So, they're always functional. I, they require no maintenance. They're not noisy. My system ran for 16 years without any attention at all. And then, I had to replace the batteries at that time. So, looking at your issues, I know there's a proposal to put solar panels on the roof of the high school. It's not the first one of those, but this one is probably more credible than some of the previous ones. And that will be coming. Not for me, from Richard Cunningham. It's an ideal location. And my concern, really, bottom line is, if you decide to put solar panels on the high school roof, then this should be part of your emergency power planning for the high school shelter. And you may decide you don't need a generator, or you need a smaller one, or something else. But if the batteries in those panels should rely on for your emergency power, then you need to rethink the decision about the generator.
Interesting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Jimmy Swindler, Stone Mill Hawthorne District. And it's my distinct pleasure to stand up here and tell you that for what I believe is the first time in the history of Rappahanna County High School, we have a varsity boys and a varsity girls basketball team that are going to be in the regional championships. I just came from the high school, watched the boys get a great win. Unfortunately, with the weather forecast, none of us really know when these games are going to happen. The girls were scheduled to play tomorrow night at Riverheads. I don't think that's going to happen. But nonetheless, we're thrilled, and I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you. See what you're going to miss.
Anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir.
Gary Achill Hampton. And I'm here tonight, again, on behalf of Headwaters and the children of Rappahannock County. Thank you for the opportunity to address both boards at the same time. We in the county have gone through a protracted time of consideration of a new comprehensive plan for the county. And I'm glad one's been adopted. And I have no doubt that it will impact the county's growth and future substantially. But from my point of view, these conversations tonight may have a greater impact on what the county looks like 15, 20, 30 years down the road than even the comprehensive plan. Research shows without doubt that among the top one or two considerations of a family making a move, if they have school-aged children, is to do a comparison of the relative strength and excellence of the schools that might be where they would move. If Rappahannock, in my view, is to prosper, one of our top priorities has to be becoming more competitive in attracting, retaining, first of all, our own kids as they age, that they might want to stay and make this their home for their own generation. But also attracting other people who are younger than I am and might have children and might want them to be in school to come here and live and work and play and be part of this wonderful county. So, these conversations between the two boards, I think, are extraordinarily critical to the future of the county. More than one annual budget or the next annual budget, understanding the significance of funding quality public education may be near the top of the most important things anyone in this county thinks about. The question about the elephant, that elephant's been around a long time. A couple of things I've learned over the last eight years is that, for whatever reason, Rappahannock is one of the most disadvantaged counties in the Commonwealth when it comes to the share of our kids' education gets paid for by the state. I think in our region, we have the lowest share paid for by state money. When you add to that, that our taxpayers' share per student is one of the lowest in the Commonwealth, if you're like me, you say, well, something's not very logical here. Public education is paid for by state and local money and federal and other monies, but primarily by state and local money. If the state's only paying 20% per kid, wouldn't you think that the local taxpayer would have to pick up the difference? If Fairfax or somewhere else is getting 50% or whatever they're getting from the state, you would think that their county share would be lower. Well, in fact, their county share is higher. Apparently, they value quality education more than Rappahannock taxpayers do. So, you put those two facts together, that the state contributes far less, and our taxpayers aren't paying as much as some of our surrounding counties. And the question is, we should have a really, or the answer is, that we should have a really crappy school system. It's not being funded. There's the elephant. Shoot it and drag it out. It should never be talked about again. The reality is that despite overwhelming obstacles to quality education, Rappahannock continues to shine as an incredibly creative, dynamic, wonderful place to have your kids go to school. Now, I don't have any little kids anymore. I'm old. But I try to be in the schools, and I've tried to volunteer in the schools. And I'm impressed by the teachers, by the staff, by the facilities, and by the kids. And that doesn't happen by accident. So, every year, we all hear these same things, and we talk to our neighbors. We all hear about, why isn't the cost of public education lower if we have fewer students? Well, there are some answers to that. You heard some tonight. But the real question is, how does this school system continue to thrive and flourish and do such a great job when it has so few dollars provided by both the state because of what I see as unfair formula, and when the local taxpayers aren't stepping up and saying, oh, yeah, let's increase school budgets? County contribution is relatively flat. Now, it is true, enrollment is dropped, but there are other explanations for that. So, let's remember those two big things. The local taxpayer is not paying a whole lot more, and the state's paying less. And yet, we continue to have a great school system. So, let's keep these conversations going so we have good answers when our neighbors ask us, why are we paying so much for our public schools? And we just don't say, well, I don't know. We do know, and we can respond positively to those questions. And we can support our teachers, our kids, and their families. Totally aside, I just happened to have a conversation with a chief of a local police region in this, in an adjoining county. And he was sharing with me how difficult it is for that county to attract really great young men and women who want to join that police force, because the money's not available. And they interview these people, and they lose them. And it breaks their hearts. And it comes down to, I got to go where I can get more money. I got a young family, whatever. They're using signing stipends, signing bonuses. I don't know whether it's legal. I don't know whether it's a possibility. But it has helped them get the very best people they're interviewing. So, I just throw that out. I have no idea whether you can do a signing bonus. But for them, they've discovered it makes that difference. And it's enough of an incentive for someone to come and be in their police force who wanted to be, but perhaps had a spouse or student loans or whatever they had to pay for. And that was just enough to get them to start there. And once they start, they know they can keep them. That's their track record. But it's getting that, the person to come to their county in the first place. Just a thought. But thank you for all your hard work, both boards. This is a great place to live. And I'm very proud of the job you all do to support our schools. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Achill. Anyone else for public comment? Annie, I will close a public comment. And we move into board discussions, I believe.
Right. Thank you all, our first.
So, at this time, we have comments from the Board of Supervisors from tonight's meeting. Anything anyone would like to share?
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Dr. Grimsley, Mr. Mills, just looking at this past year with the pandemic, it occurs to me that as you present your school budget for the 21, 22 fiscal year, and that budget likely being driven by expenditures and revenue trends from the past year, there are four variables that I see as potentially distortive regarding your expenses and revenue during this ongoing fiscal year. And I just want to highlight these and then make one request for additional data that perhaps your finance and accounting team could prepare for our purposes when you deliver the school budget. The first variable on the revenue side is obviously county CARES Act funds that went into the school system. Second, on the revenue side, school CARES Act funds, which you receive directly. On the expense side, capital expenditures made during this ongoing fiscal year related to the COVID-19 pandemic. And then, finally, operating expenses across the board that might have varied compared to any normal year, up or down due to COVID-19 challenges. So, with these four distorted variables in mind, my request is, and this really, hopefully will help my colleagues and me have a, have the ability to do an apples-to-apples comparison between the 2021- the 2021 budget, 2021 expenditures, actual, and 2122 budget. What I'm seeking is, aside, basically, a breakdown at a general ledger account detail level for 2021 actual expenditures, and then identifying within those accounts those expenses that were incurred related to COVID-19 so that we can strip back your expenses to what should be a representation of a normal year so that we're looking from 2021 to actual expenses in 2021, and then 2122, netting out any COVID-19-related expenses and netting out any COVID-19-related revenue.
May I?
Sure.
Okay, just for clarification, because it's still going to be a little distortive just because, for all intents and purposes, all operational funding for our operations were basically COVID-related, and that's where you saw us basically reimburse with COVID revenues that came in against expenditures that would be there anyway. So it's not going to show you, I think, what you're looking for in that sense, because we used a lot of that to reimburse operational expenses already in the budget that we repurposed with already appropriated funds in order to return a large amount to the county, thereby basically saving the county from a shortfall this year in your revenue.
Right, yeah, I understand all that.
So I just want to make that clarification point, that that's what, it's still going to be distortive in that sense, but I can definitely call it out where that, and we have done that. We have kept those accounts clear.
And I should mention, I just want to state this for the record, and I recognize that it might take some additional discussion to get to an analytical tool that's helpful to us. So I'm happy to talk with whomever I need to offline, but I did want to state for the record that I think it's important that we try, to the extent possible, to look, take a pure view of your expenses and revenue in this ongoing fiscal year so that we're doing an apples-to-apples-to-apples comparison.
Absolutely. Each budget, you will have that. You'll have budgeted receipts versus actual receipts and expenditures, and each time we call that out, in every line for you in the budget, so you will see that. But we will try to peel back some of this. I think I see what you're saying, but most of our dollars, we tried very, very hard to repurpose already allocated funding. So that basically, anytime you see a federal fund with no supplant provision, we go crazy because that's where we can save and ultimately return back. So that's where it'll still be a little distortive, so we'll try, I guess, our best to...
And I don't want this to turn into a data collection nightmare, so I'll gladly work with Mr. Curry and you and your board to try to figure out something that would be useful. But I do think it's important that we account for the fact that there were obviously extraordinary expenditures this past year, and there was also an extraordinary influx of revenue. And I think to look at a budget for an upcoming fiscal year without taking all that into account might lead us to false conclusions about what you're seeking in terms of local funding.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
I just would hope that when we have our future joint meetings, that we would build Zoom access into our meetings as well. These meetings are generally some of the most robustly attended meetings that the Board of Supervisors has, and I know for any number of reasons, there are people that don't want to attend in-person meetings these days. And so any way that we could build in Zoom access so that people could participate from their homes, I think, would be a very worthwhile cause. And I think it's easy now that the county and the schools have the same compatible equipment, and we should be able to patch in with relative ease so that people can be included in the process, even if they're not comfortable attending in person.
Any other comments? I just think we ought to thank you for the goodies on our table and find out. I know some folks usually make the pens and stuff. Can we get...
Yeah, do we have a story with the pens?
We actually have a video that's later in the meeting. It was in the school board appreciation, but if the board could maybe adjust that, I could move it up to show the video since you brought it up with everybody here.
That'd be cool. Can you pull up the video?
I can.
Yeah, let's do it.
I'd be happy to. So these were handmade by some of our vocational tech savvy students. Let's see if I can find that video here. Okay, and this was a plasma cutter that was actually purchased through pooling of Perkins, Career and Technical Ed, federal funding. Our career and technical vocational teachers rotate through each department, so business gets their equipment money one year, and then it might go to IT, and then to finance, and then welding gets in, and then building trades, culinary. So they have a rotation schedule. So this was one of those items purchased that made the gift you got tonight.
I was jogging it into place. Got our fancy hoodle hooked up. Just the dust collector. And the bottom end, we said fire the hole. There it is. Fall. All right, see? Some fancy raincoat. There's the operator.
We're done in Mr. Hogan's welding shop, and he's really adamant about incorporating the art into welding and things. So these are the types of things that our students may, you may have seen before, some of the horseshoe creations through practicing their different welding techniques and things that they make. They wanted to showcase that for as part of the board appreciation, so we each have gotten one of those. And also the pens, I don't have a video on that one, but these are made with the wood turning class in Scotch Schlosser's Building Trades. So they're very operational, and they take a block of wood from a block of wood and make a beautiful pen. So you have one of those as well.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Motion to adjourn the Board of Supervisors portion of the evening?
I so moved. Well, do you still, I'm sorry, do the school board still get their comments during the open...
Yeah, we need to make sure we have her. So are there any comments from the school board before they leave? Anybody? Any comments, questions?
I would just observe to Kier's comments that it's not, I don't think that this coming year is planned as if we're going back to perfectly normal, so that is going to muddy some of those kinds of numbers. There's not really any data that's showing us that we're finishing the pandemic in June, so that's something to consider. And I do think that sometimes we've observed that the pandemic has actually given us opportunities to put things that were far behind on our list for improvements, such as air filters is one big thing, that we might find benefits, our school, in ways we didn't realize we would. I think some things got put ahead on our list. So I just, you can't kind of snap your fingers and act like it didn't happen, and I just, I'm sure that we all are aware of that, and that we're all changed irrevocably in some ways by this experience. Just wanted to put that. And I also wanted to echo Ms. Smith's. I've had, before, ahead of this meeting, I had three constituents reach out specifically asking for Zoom, so that is a widely requested thing. So I'm glad you brought that up, Christine.
Anything else? Sheil?
If I may, I just wanted to ask a question about the contingency dollars and the projected revenue forecast for this year. You did release some of that funding in order for us to give our 2% bonus to our teachers, and we had a placeholder that if that were to meet at that time, that you would release additional funding to the schools so that we can take care of our other staff who weren't able to get the increase in December. And I think that calculation was a total of about $53,000, Stacy, about. So if that were to be released, if your revenues look good, we'd greatly appreciate that to be equitable to the rest of our staff.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I have a motion to adjourn second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Hear from our citizens, and there's time for public comment prior to action items. On our agenda, we ask that speakers identify themselves and their home district. We also ask that comments are limited to three minutes in order to provide equity to all speakers, and ensure our meeting is reasonable length. If you have more information that can be summarized in three minutes, please provide leave behind materials for the board's review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as time has elapsed. If you have questions during this session, we ask for clarification from your school member or school administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming. We have a recognition of School Board Appreciation Month and Clerk Appreciation Month.
Yes.
All right. Who's not in that?
So what we typically do is we put the certificates at each one of your places, but more importantly, the students have decorated the halls and the severe with things that they have made and personal notes to tell you that they care about you and what you've done for the schools. And we don't want to forget the crucial role that our clerk and deputy clerk play in these meetings and all the behind-the-scenes and organizational pieces, so it's appreciation for Ms. Rogers, too.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Rogers.
So annually, we get one of these with our name on it, right? Suitable for framing. But this one is much more valuable. This is from Silas in the sixth grade. I suppose you all got one, too. I'm not sure.
They're on the walls, aren't they? Some are.
But some are personalized.
Here's what I like about this. Silas, who's in sixth grade, called me Wes Mills, which is extraordinary because that's what people call me, all right? This one, from the state of Virginia, says John Mills.
They don't know you.
They don't know me from that. Hey, but look what Silas wrote. "Thank you for letting us have school this year."
Oh, that's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Isn't that cool?
Put that up on your refrigerator.
So if you have a chance, you know, appreciate your school board member and clerk. That's all I can say.
That was very nice.
Donations.
Yeah, that's great to read. George and Barbara Shulman donated $100 to the class of 2021. Rappahannock County Democratic Committee donated $400 to athletics. Miss Appleton Handhold Incorporated donated $800 to athletics.
Thank you very much. Donations will be accepted with letters of thanks during the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes from the January 12th and January 19th meetings?
Sue moved.
We have a motion. Who's that? I'm not sitting in the same place.
Sue moved.
Motion for Mr. Grove, is there a second? Second, Mr. Uben, is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Sordid. Mr. Grove, did you have a chance to review the bills?
I have, and everything looks to be in order.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? We have a motion, Mr. Uben, is there a second?
Okay.
Second, Ms. Bynum, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Sordid. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Even though we have one item, it sort of encompasses quite a few different things because it's the calendar. So we are going to ask you to approve a calendar for next year. Both calendars were sent out, and Dr. Johnson will give an overview of that process, what we found out, and your options for that. And after that, we will give a reopening update because it may address some calendar changes for the remainder of the year based on what our metrics look like and whether or not we're moving forward with phasing into four-day. So I've put that under here. It seemed in appropriate spot, and we'll talk about that. So, Dr. Johnson, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I want you to know that there are two jobs that are very difficult these days. One is to be a weather forecaster. The other is to be the lady in charge of the school calendar. Do you know how many times that calendar has changed this past year? And then to be tasked with putting together a calendar for the next school year when I'm not sure that it's going to be any different. But we did. We persevered. So if you will just take a quick look at the first slide, this gives you the overview of what our traditional calendar process has been. Up until 2019, we had been trying to build a calendar that had 187 days in it, so that included built-in snow days. It featured an early start, first semester that ends at winter break. Because we had the seven built-in days, we had the potential that the school year could end earlier. So we had requests from teachers that we consider looking at using bank time instead of building in seven built-in snow days. So according to the Virginia Code, we're required to have 180 days of school or 990 hours. There are some requirements for makeup days. The school day is required to be 5.5 hours. However, our school day is longer at 6.25, which gives us additional time that we can use as far as our 990 hours. Now, of course, this year with COVID, the 180 days were lifted, the 990 hours, so we're not under those constraints. The calendar team met in January. We solicited input from teachers, administrators, and parents to get their feedback on what they thought we needed for a calendar. If you can go to the next slide, Dr. Grimsley. Really, the main reason, I think, that we came back together as a calendar committee was because we still have a little bit of difference of opinion about the spring break, of what is better, two shorter spring breaks or one longer spring break? So we discussed that again. We also discussed making spring break separate from Easter, considering more than one workday for staff in September through October, considering two workdays at the start of first semester, moving the first parent-teacher conference from September to October so that teachers have more opportunity to get to know their students, moving a workday later in March to help support the writing SOL. And then there was some discussion of maintaining distance learning Wednesdays. So two calendars were presented for a vote, and you have a copy of both of those. They both feature 180 days of instruction. There are 86 days in the first semester, 94 in the second. Really, the main difference in those was the spring break, two shorter spring breaks versus the one longer. So we sent the survey out to staff and parents in January. We had a total of 173 staff and parents who responded, with 61% voting for Calendar A, which had the two shorter spring breaks, and 78 voting for Calendar B. I'm sorry, 46% for Calendar B. Some of the comments, we had six people who wrote comments supporting the two smaller breaks, four comments supporting the week-long break, five comments supporting maintaining distance learning Wednesdays, one comment regarding a later start in August, and then 10 comments thanking the calendar committee. So it was interesting that the comments came up about the distance learning Wednesdays because that wasn't one of the questions we had asked people. Now, we had sent a survey earlier to ask people their opinion about continuing the distance learning Wednesdays. Some of the reasons that the team discussed as to why these might be good, it would be a transition for our students from the hybrid schedule for this year. It would allow for the Tier 3 remediation to continue. Also, we could continue beneficial programs like the Wonderful Wednesday Camp. Additional opportunities could be presented for fine arts and enrichment programs from some of our community partners who have volunteered those services. We would also have additional opportunities for social-emotional We would also have additional opportunities for social-emotional learning activities, perhaps opportunities for athletics, commit-to-be-fit, and the potential for extra planning for some of our teachers at the elementary school and distance learning instruction. In a survey that was sent out to staff and parents regarding distance learning Wednesdays, we had 94% of the staff who were in favor, and we had 72% of the parents who were in favor. Childcare issue was noted as a problem area for 20% of the parents who responded. So based on the results of that survey, first, we would like to recommend to the school board to approve Calendar 1. We would like to form a study group to determine the feasibility of whether distance learning Wednesdays would be appropriate for next school year. And then we would like to report back to the school board with a potential plan for distance learning Wednesdays if that is feasible. So thank you for your consideration, and would there be any questions?
Any questions?
So you don't have the distant learning Wednesdays are built into the calendar as a teaching day?
They could potentially be the same as they were this past school year, so they would be remote learning days for students.
And that would be for 100% of the students?
Well, we haven't seen the proposal yet. What they're saying is they would look at different ways that the Wellness Wednesday, I don't like using the term distance learning Wednesday because the whole idea of this when you all were bringing it up, that's why we explored it in the first place, was because of the enrichment opportunities, the wellness supports we could provide, the whole child development, social-emotional learning, addressing those things. So it's a Wellness Wednesday opportunity, but it would provide five days of instruction per week, some of it distance, but some, everyone would have an in-person Wednesday option if distance learning is not feasible. So that would definitely be a non-negotiable. You would have to have a Wednesday option in person, whether it's an enrichment, whether it's a camp opportunity, whether it's a club, whether it's partly schoolwork, study at school with a supervision with enrichment activities later, whatever it would look like. We don't know yet, but there's some proposals and committees forming to help design what that would look like. I wonder too about the survey, whether it would be the, you know, I think in people's mind, they're thinking of the context right now, how it looks. You know, basically, in a new model with an in-person option on a Wednesday, we would rely very heavily on volunteers and outside organizations, but also teaching staff. They would have to be doing something on those days, so it's not like a whole additional planning, especially since now the state is opening up Virtual Virginia as our distance learning option. So we can now take off the instructional piece of our teachers to make sure that's on Virtual Virginia separately. So the teachers could be wholly dedicated to doing these other things too, with a rotation cycle for additional planning, equitable planning at the elementary. Lots of feasibility, lots of questions and logistics. So I'm looking forward to see what the proposal would look like, but the more you go down that rabbit hole, there's a lot of pieces to it. So it'll be interesting to see what they come up with. A lot of creative people that Carol's getting together to facilitate the discussion.
So I guess what I'm saying is if we approve of Calendar 1, that will be a five-day-a-week calendar.
Yes, that's what it is.
As we sit right now.
This is a basic calendar.
Unless we change it to virtual Wednesdays.
And even if you did, it would not change that it's a five-day instructional week. You'd just make Wednesday look different.
But it would change it to the point where you wouldn't have everybody here on a Wednesday.
Yeah, it would change the way the instruction looks on that day for students.
Right. So I have a comment. So I appreciate that you're going to get a group together to feasibility of the Wednesday option, but I'm not an advocate of, I'm an advocate of let's get back to normal. And I just want to make sure that you know that I'm going to, I certainly tell the committee to explore options and bring back to us. I did, I was thinking though, you know, we're looking at a 990-hour requirement that we're trying to work towards, and in a year where things are normal, how would we track that when all of a sudden many different students are in different models and we're trying to track hours for a Wednesday? So to me, it seems like there could be a logistic issue as far as accounting, but I wanted to, and a fairness or an equal opportunity issue to me if we're trying to balance both in a world where it's very, it's optimistic, and which I like us to be optimistic, that we say, if we can have school five days a week, let's get back to school, regular plan, you know, students know what's happening, parents know what's happening, everybody can plan around it, and we get back to work, right?
Well, one piece that I had intended to add, and I was getting hot under my mask and was trying to finish up, but I do think that there have been a lot of lessons that have been learned over the course of this past year. COVID has presented quite a challenge to us instructionally, and we've had to overcome a lot of hurdles. But I think we would be remiss if we didn't learn from the things that did actually benefit students this year. Some of these opportunities that they had on Wednesdays, as far as the social learning, as far as the leadership opportunities, those are not things that they can get within the course of a traditional seven-hour school day the way that it always is. Now, and it will depend on what are the seat requirements going to look like next year, and that's going to depend on what does COVID look like next year?
Yep.
What's instruction? So, you know, this feasibility study truly is that, and it's going to be, it's going to be a moving target, you know, as things unfold over the course of the next several months with COVID. You know, we, I'm not sure that distance learning is going to be gone next year. I think it's going to be here in some way, shape, or form, and us getting a handle up front on the Wonderful Wednesdays may actually be an advantage to us to be poised to be able to deal with that. So that's kind of the other side of that.
Okay. Yeah, I look forward to hearing back from the group. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
All right, so later, there is an action item to adopt the school calendar. Calendar A is the Calendar 1 that has the two shorter spring breaks. I think it's hard to ascertain what that's like because we really haven't experienced yet. Our first one's coming up, so I don't know. We'll see. And in fact, since winter break with the weather, man, we're having a lot. Distance learning has helped at least get some of that instruction through, but it's just not the same sometimes. But, all right, so under here, I also have the reopening update with new state guidance that has been delivered. You heard the governor's announcement last week pushing for more in-person instruction. By March 15th, all schools in Virginia must have in-person options available to families. That doesn't mean all traditional five-day, no mitigation, and just go. That's not what it means at all. And I'll share what the guidance looks like now because it's changed even from last month that I gave this presentation. And then it will help you make a decision about a timetable for maybe starting the transition to four day. So the new interim guidance has five steps now. So the step one, you do a self-assessment of your implementation of mitigation strategies. Step two is the level of school impact, how, but in order to ascertain that, the state superintendent of instruction was very adamant that schools have to offer some in-person before you can realize that metric, right? So that's part of it. Determine the community level of transmission, understanding your community needs, and then deciding which groups to include for in-person first, what's the timeline, how are you going to phase in? Now, if you recall, in our reopening plan, we kind of had that from the beginning. That's always been our intent, was to get to start phasing into four day. But of course, with the recent spike and everything, we kept the hybrid going, and we surveyed parents and teachers, and we've had lengthy discussions about that. So step one, assessing mitigation strategies. They just want to make sure you have plans in place for all of these things. We have over five plus, and in fact, I think we're way ahead of many districts and colleagues I've talked to, especially with the HVAC and air quality. That's where a lot of them are struggling to get those air scrubbers, UV, decontamination, nobody's gotten that, but that's largely due to our collaboration with the county, with CARES Act funding, that we were able to do that before we started getting more students in. So that's been a huge benefit, the barriers, the PPE, every staff member's had what they wanted, and we actually had additional reserves for those staff who may have ADA accommodation due to COVID issues that we needed to address too. So I think we met everything there. Step two is determining the level of school impact, and the state released a new metric to look at that. So basically, what you're looking at is, you know, what, once you're open, what's the transmission look like in the school? What's happening? Are you seeing a lot of transmission? Are your staff, are you strained to staff your school? I know in a lot of other districts, we did see that when they switched to virtual learning for a two-week period to a month, largely due to staffing in most cases. So there was just not insufficient staff to run the school. When you have so many on quarantine and not enough subs, that will happen, and you can't efficiently run. Absenteeism, what does that look like? And then, you know, your transmission, zero sporadic cases with no evidence in transmission, two outbreaks within a short time period or sporadic outbreaks in school, but the outbreaks are small. I would say right now, we're kind of in between that low-medium, you know, is kind of where you want to see as our level of impact. But in all cases, with our new local contact tracing and response method, we've had zero transmission result from those outbreaks when we've had them. They were immediately contained, quarantined, we've had no other transmission in each case. So it's working.
And that included how many people?
What do you mean?
The cases.
The cases, we had, well, it's only two when it's an outbreak. In both cases, it was two initial.
Two initial.
And then you quarantine anyone after you contact trace against.
I guess that's what my question, you had to quarantine X number of people?
Right. But in no case did we have to, did we have insufficient staff. I did, in our first outbreak with a primary classroom, close the school for that two-week period right before Christmas just because we didn't at that time understand, and we were still waiting on VDH to give us more guidance on that. But what we, and it was also coming up to holiday time and a lot of like parties and classes, and it was just not a good idea to do when you might have an outbreak happening in primary. So we decided to make that call and then develop a more stringent response plan that I gave you last time. So, but two, just two interrelated cases is an outbreak, and that gets you kind of on the radar, so you have to be careful. But again, in no cases were those two interrelated cases on both that, the wrestling, all that. That wasn't, those were our two outbreaks, yeah, because they had two people that were interrelated with a positive result. And then, of course, there were other quarantines based on that, but we don't report out on quarantines. That could happen to anybody at any time. You walked by somebody or was at a gathering and, you know, you got quarantined because, you know, you were near somebody. All right, determining the level of community transmission, our primary indicators, this is the lovely dashboard in step three that I show you every month that we have since. This is what our numbers are looking like. Starting to see a decrease in the percent positive, which is good in our primary indicator. The cases per 100 is very skewed for Rappahannock, and remember, the VDH epidemiologist said that's really not an indicator Rappahannock should look at too closely just because two or three people will drive that way up because of your size, but really look at your percent positive school mitigation. And then your secondary indicators are looking, they're all in the green for the first time in a while. So change in cases is going down, occupied hospital beds and occupied beds due to COVID. So we're finally, I think, starting to see that downward trajectory that we anticipated based on other viral trends that we've seen. So that's good. And as vaccination efforts increase, that will probably, you know, diverge even more.
I see what the Super Bowl does.
We'll see. Number four is just understanding your community needs. What percentage of your vulnerable learners are actually getting in-person instruction? How many days? Special services? English language learners, the percent of children that don't have internet at home? What about your families who are struggling to find childcare? What's the percentage of teachers and staff that are in high-risk categories that still don't feel safe? All those pieces together are going to give you a sense of what your community is able and ready to do. And then, once you have that information, you kind of put it together on this to make a decision. And that's where we kind of are right now. So decide your student groups and timeline. They would like your, it kind of shows you what you should shoot for in the low, lowest, moderate, to maximize in-person learning, and then consider your extracurriculars, maximize in-person learning. And then if your level of community transmission is high, you should really prioritize. So this metrics kind of helps you see on both accesses where they should meet up. So like I said, your community level of transmission is pretty high, your school impact is low, maybe to medium, but I would say more on the low side. If that makes sense, that's the metrics the state is saying to use. Which brings us to our discussion, you know, March 15th is that looming date to provide in-person. Our current hybrid model does already meet. It's compliant with that. But we have continually said, as, you know, community transmission levels start to come downward, that we would look at starting with our K to 2 or K to 3 population, which the state is now pushing K to 3 at the very least to maximize as much in-person as you can at this point because of the literacy learning loss and impact on mental health that they're seeing. It's just very significant across the state, across the nation, really. So, and that's what our plan had anyway, is the beginning, start of the phase in. The thing, the question is the timeline. When's a good timeline? When should we start matriculating more children in? Questions, concerns, I'll open up that part to the board.
Our original plan, the roadmap originally was to start with the younger kids and then every two weeks, I think it was, to increase. If that was our intent based on metrics, and the metrics are there, we should, we should move that way, right?
Yes, and I would add one more thing, that 60% of our staff have signed up and registered for the vaccine. We have not completed round two yet. But by middle of March, we should be very, very close. So if you were looking at like a March 15th date to start, give that two-week period, and then phase in the next group after a couple of weeks, and then we could start at that point, that would probably be a good.
And the 40 that didn't choose to get the vaccine, they're not concerned, otherwise they would have gotten it.
Right, and we haven't mandated it, and we're, you know, HIPAA is very clear that we don't, it's not really our business what you do with your.
Only 60%?
Actually, that's much higher than the state average, is 30. So we're doing really well, actually. Yeah.
For teachers.
Yeah. That's the state average right now, what they told us on the, yeah.
So at this point, we would plan to progress using the plan to start March 15th with our graduated introduction. Yes?
Would we include the third grade? That's my question, because originally, we said K to 2, primary hall, measure in that hallway was more of a proximity thing. State's really pushing for that third grade year too because it's so critical for reading. Would you want to do K to 3 or stick with the K?
I think so, yeah. And so I'd asked a question some time ago, and it was, since we're operating, since we're operating as two facilities autonomously, right? And we manage them as far as their health stature independently. So my comment is, what would stop us from beginning both buildings at the same time?
It's difficult because it's different. It's not like grade levels where you have the same number of teachers in that cohort group because eighth, ninth, 10th graders are taking all different classes throughout, so your capacity levels are difficult to manage that way.
All right, so it's because of the class structure?
It is, yeah. And you'll very quickly push your capacity way over, you know, being able to social distance effectively. So that's something to keep in mind. Now, as the transmission levels come further down, it's much safer to do that, you know. So at a later time, I think they would be projected in mid-April to get 6 through 12 in anyway. So we're not far from getting them in anyway, but being prepared to, because the phase in is going to help us measure what happens when we do that, right? So we start with a smaller cohort group, we have more controls, we can kind of see what happens, what occurs, and then we're able to adjust before. We can't control very much once the high school goes in because class sizes are very different, the schedule's different, so, but that's why.
So with the phase in, or how are we going to? When you, when you. With the phase in, or how are we going to, when, when you have full, full groups going, you're setting up full groups going five days, K three, is that what we're talking about?
Four days.
Going four days, so having that Wednesday, break day. What does it look like? I just want to jog our memories and just make sure that whoever's here, see, what does it look like in the classroom in terms of density? Because I know that we talked about adding on an early teacher. I mean, what's it look like, all of the, what kind of mitigation? We continue to have.
So what will. Correct. So, yeah, we're masking anyway in the classroom always. So we have that in place. The rule is to try to keep at least three feet of distance between students. Because as you come up, there's just not enough space. With our primary promises class, that has reduced the class size that we'll see in that initial group. So that class will remain there. We're going to keep that to make sure we have the space to do that. And should we start to transition more? We might look at that model for the, especially fourth, fifth grade, where our capacities are kind of already pretty high, because we've been accepting a lot more four-day applicants. So in, in that case. So we've been trying to accommodate as best we can with the needs that our families bring up. But it'll be a phase in after two indicator periods after that, so.
We will, we'll, we'll always fall back to our contingency posture if there's an issue. So.
Well, and what our plan says though, is that once we start the phase in, we'll measure and try to do the best we can, the hybrid will go away. So there's no longer an, an option for two day for people. It's either you're remote or you're hybrid.
Right.
So, I mean, you're four day or you're remote. So that'll.
You're either four day or.
Remote.
Or you're remote totally.
Yes, there's no more hybrid. Yeah.
And when, if we, when we start the phase in, if, if we have a big spike next week, for example, we would go back into the red and we would not be able to start on the 15th as we would like.
What'll happen is, oh, I got you. So what you're saying is, do we start if we come right back up in community transmission?
Right, I mean, it's possible there's, you know, Larry mentioned the Super Bowl. I don't, you know, there's all kinds of.
Well, and then what they're trying to say is that your community transmission shouldn't drive your decision to bring in students. It's more about your, your school transmission, what you're seeing impacted here. Because what's happening here is really not having any impact and vice versa too much, other than what we know about illness when we contact trace is that if you present with symptoms and your community transmission is high, it's more likely that it could be COVID related. So we take extra precautions, more stringent quarantining, more like we've done. So that's what would be in place. But once we switch to that model, we'll follow our school response plan, even just with more kids. So there might, there'll be more quarantining potentially if there's a, if there's a case. And that I can't help, that's VDH guidance, we have to do that. So I can't promise, you know, that we won't have larger numbers of students quarantined at certain times or switch to distance learning for the period of the quarantine, things like that. But we'll follow the same procedure.
Right, so, so if someone, if we have more people quarantining, for example, they still will have the, the distance learning platforms available?
Yes.
All the supports available?
Absolutely. So the teachers will still be using the same canvas. They'll still be using the, the same structure curriculum that they've built. It's just now you're getting the in-person support with it. And remote learners will still get their curriculum that way.
And then that's the other question is, would remote learners then have the chance to opt in as well? Or does this work just with our in-person learners?
They would and vice versa. We have to offer in-person, whatever our modality is, the in-person option and the remote option have to be available and that's by state guidance.
So people could switch to in-person and remote and it would be a four day.
What would the average class size be if you had? Say you're going to go K, I prefer to go K five. Is that a possibility?
You're the board.
I mean, would you have enough space to do that?
Some of our classes would be pretty high. No, I, I think I would recommend the, the phase in with the K to three to start. Just so we have enough time to build in an additional staff resource for, especially that fourth grade. That's really high already. We have a lot of, I mean, we're already at capacity for that. If we throw in more, you're going to look at like 20, 23 kids in a class. And so I don't even know I can maintain three feet in that case. So it may require some, you know, additional staffing and spacing to look at that as we face in. But we know we have a starting point, gives us time to get ready for that.
It's only two weeks later.
Well, it's two indicator periods, if you remember that. I just thought of that. So that's four weeks.
Four weeks.
It's four weeks, yeah.
It's two, two week periods.
Exactly, that's an indicator period.
So it's K through three, March 15th.
Yeah.
But four and five wouldn't be until April 15th?
It would be about that time, yeah. We could switch, yeah, it's two indicator, four week period. That's what our plan says.
Yeah, the high school, if that's what the, if that was what we were using, then the high school wouldn't go back until May 15th, which they're almost done.
They're almost done. So you could switch that now that we've gone up. If you wanted to get that to the point where everybody comes in, you could say, let's start with K to three for the first indicator period, everybody else, April 15th is.
At least.
It just seems like it would be difficult to.
I'm not sure this whole thing is over.
For two weeks at the end of the year.
Do it for 15th and then March 30th and there's no point in the middle or the end of April to bring anybody back. I know a lot of kids are already frustrated and I know we have to balance it with the pandemic and the infection rate, but we're doing a fantastic job now. We're going to add more bodies, we're going to crush in, but we've got kids begging to come back with the upswing in mental health that's going on with these kids and their parents and the strain. They need to be in school. They need to be in school all along. It's, it's been a long drawn out process. And I know you guys are doing the most you can and the teachers, I mean, we, we get grades back, 12:30 at night, 5 o'clock in the morning, teachers are responding, they're up and, and they're still working. They're doing a fantastic job. But mentally, emotionally, the sooner these kids come back, the better off they are emotionally, physically, the better off their grades are going to be with the big struggle we saw in the fall, trying to get distance learning and trying to get these kids, you know, you can't learn some of the core values and practices in, you know, watch my lips when I read this to you, Johnny. This is how we say, you're not going to get it at home on a computer, you're just not. We had a, you know, an AP, you know, dual enrollment senior that bombed online learning before the pandemic. The sooner the better.
Is it reasonable?
Two weeks at the most.
Is it reasonable to have one indicator period between each transition?
One indicator period would tell us something probably.
We're already ticking down. We are setting a model for how, how to work this.
Why don't we, why don't we, why don't we target that, settle, right? So March 15th, March 30th, or whatever it is, 29th, and then two weeks later.
We'd mid-April.
The high school and it gets them, it gets them back six weeks of.
Okay, I don't understand why you can't do the high school when you, I don't understand why you can't do the high school when you're doing the elementary, because they're two separate buildings and the problem starting is going to be the same whether you start it now or later.
Well, and it's, transmissions are higher right now in the community. So there's a higher likelihood that any illness we get is maybe related, which would result in larger quarantines. The harder thing at the high school is I have no controls to see how this is going to work as we infiltrate more students. So just because we don't have all ninth and 10th graders taking those classes in a hallway, like we do here. So all your fourth graders, they're in this area, we can control and make sure we're mitigating and separating. And the high school, they're in all throughout the building. So as you increase that number in capacities, yeah, so-and-so's class may have 10, but now this class is at 30, so, you know, we have to watch that.
My point is that's going to be the problem no matter when you start.
Which we would like lower numbers, lower risk numbers before we do that. And just to make sure we've worked out the kinks in the areas we can control. So giving us just a little more time with that would be helpful, yeah.
It's part of the, the timing that we can't, we're trying to predict is so that we won't end up having a situation where we go back to school and then we have to shut it all down again. Like we want to do it graduated. So I think that's what I remember from the earlier discussion, you, you want to do it. So that you're not going to jerk people around and go.
Well, and that's my fear too, is that, exactly right. So if our goal is to maintain in-person, open instruction as best we can, we've got to prevent any outbreaks from happening in here, because once that happens, I do have to shut down for a couple of weeks at a time. It could be a month at a time. So that, and I have no choice about that. Whereas with smaller numbers, it's easier to quarantine individuals. So that's just something to balance. So I can't promise, you know, we'll do the best we can.
It seems like, it seems like we at least have consensus around K through three, March 15th, four and five.
Early April.
March 30th.
Yeah.
Or whatever that day is, that Monday. And then two weeks after that.
Six through 12.
The rest.
Yep. That's what our plan says, six through 12 in that group.
Yep. So, so that'll be our plan, which we'll adjust if we need to.
Okay.
That's, that's assuming that everything stays neutral somewhere.
It's always assuming that and.
And you know, we don't know where all these variants are going to go and.
Not, we don't know.
We're just hoping that if the trend that we're seeing will.
It just skips and goes over somewhere else across the mountain.
Right. You got enough to work with there, right? You good?
That's what I need, yes. Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, thanks.
So we could, we can't, we're talking pre-K, right? Pre-K to three?
Pre-K is already four days. They have been since.
They're already full day.
So K to three is what we're talking about initially, March 15th will come back.
Full day, four days a week.
Correct.
With the Wednesday being a cleaning day.
Right.
Is that also a virtual day?
It's also a virtual day, Wednesday camp day and Wednesday school day, that we have Wednesday school for certain student, groups of students, yeah.
Could that Wednesday be a makeup day for kids that are behind?
That's kind of what we use it for, yeah. It is, it is an instructional day. Kids do have Wednesday curriculum they need to work on, but we also have remedial supports and additional time to help students get caught up.
Remediation starts tomorrow, right?
It does, yes. Wednesday school starts tomorrow.
You know that.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was a lot, but it's very important, very important.
That's exciting.
All right, thank you. So are we ready to move on? I think we are. VSB, VSB a business honor roll, and this is a, just a query. Is there anybody on the board that, that can see us submitting a, a business this year? Or does anybody have any ideas? If you come up with one.
Yeah.
Let, let's, let's just discuss it. We don't have to do it right now, but we do need to get this form submitted back to VSB so that we can eventually award it.
Do we have specific businesses who have supported the academies that we could spotlight? That, I mean, we could, I know that we have Raffsy, we have already recognized in this manner, I believe, but.
It's a good question, yeah.
You know, I, I mean, I believe that, you know, the veterinary.
Rose Hill.
Rose Hill.
Rose Hill?
They've been doing a lot with our students.
That's a great idea.
But that, that was the only.
It's a great idea.
I love that idea. Rose Hill?
Rose Hill?
Rose Hill Veterinary Clinic.
I think they've done a lot and they've even had animals come in.
It's a great idea.
Wonderful idea, yeah.
Ms. Rogers, can you pursue submitting that form to VSB then? For Rose Hill? Great, that's a great idea, thanks. All right, the Madison Agreement is in a package and it's basically that annual thing where the two superintendents sign this agreement. Before we sell our buses, we offer them to them if they want them. Before we sell our cars, we offer them, we share enrollment positions in our CTE classes and that type of thing, right? Everybody's familiar with this. And I think the other benefit we get is some kind of change in a portion of our budget to a different LCI.
Exactly right.
It's a small part, but it's something.
It helps. In some years, it's really high, you know, so it's your supplemental basic aid, where you'll see that bump from being able to adjust with, using Madison's LCI for that, that calculation.
So we'll be voting on that again tonight?
Yes, sir.
Any, any questions on that? Report of the Headwaters representative.
I have a report. I'm going to wake my phone up. I'm going to use my phone, because I can read it better than this other screen. So let's see if I can find it. All right. Headwaters has been awarded, which I think we saw in the news, the Thornhill Excellence and Youth Foundation Grant for $5,000. And this is to support the Ag Academy. And that's, it's a wonderful addition. Thank you for that. They also, this coming Saturday, Headwaters in conjunction with Raff is offering a six-week drama club for third through seventh graders. And it starts right on this stage or maybe out in the courtyard too. And it's with Raff volunteers. They're mostly full, there might be a couple of spaces, but they're mostly full for this.
What grades is that?
It's third through seventh grade.
Three through seven.
Yeah, yeah. And it'll be, it arose out of the Rappahannock Kids Coalition, which, and hope, we hope to offer, Headwaters would like to offer more opportunities in the arts, for arts pods later this year to use that community resource. And it's great for mental health, I know, for sure. The after-school enrichment program is in the planning stages and will be reopening in the beginning of March. They've met with school administration and have, and can return with smaller cohorts and increased staff and enhanced safety procedures and enrichment opportunities that will support all the students. And then in planning stages of the summer chorus, it's in the initial stages. It'll be under this, the guidance of the manager Keith Hudson, who's done it in the past. He is the chair of music at Georgetown Day School in Washington DC. And he, he will be doing it tentatively for June 21st through July 2nd. And it's third through 12th grade. And usually the concert is held at the Castleton Festival grounds. Of course, we'll see what happens with COVID. Maybe it'll be all normal by then, so it's an exciting thing.
Thank you. MVGS?
Well, yeah, we did meet, but I have to be honest, I totally forgot about it.
I have.
Do you know if MVGS will be doing in person?
But our superintendent went.
Oh.
Are they, are they entertaining in person? I have a person at home who wants to know.
For next year, I believe.
Or this year, I think.
Oh, for this year, right now they're staying virtual. But as FAWCER is shifting, usually MVGS governing board kind of shifts with FAWCER's model. And I know they're shifting all elementary schools to, well, discussing, elementary schools to in-person April 1st. So you'll see that from school districts across the state. MVGS talked about, let's see, their monthly financial report, all looked in order, some telework guidance from LFCC. Ms. Huff, our new executive director of, for Mountain Vista, talked about her dissertation in practice about equity issues and gifted ed. So it's really a timely topic. So she was asking for support from the superintendents that if she asked for some data or any way we could help her, it will help benefit the program at MVGS and be sure our processes are equitable. And that was pretty much it.
Shannon, what, what's her name again?
Her, her name is Kelly Huff.
Huff?
Huff, H U F F.
H U F F. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. All right, moving to public comments, anybody that'd like to address the board this evening can rise and come, yes?
Lenny Janot, Stonewall Hawthorne, and I know we are done. Meeting has lasted a long time, but I wanted to say first off, thank you all for being here and doing it. And I wanted to agree with Mr. Uben that our kids do need to go back to school. My, my little one started in four days a week. They're in first grade and third grade. And of course, they haven't actually gone four days a week since Christmas because of the weather. And I knew that would happen, but it's allowed me a chance to work. And I want to be clear, I have my parent hat on right now. But my big kids are super jealous because they're saying, hey, we can't, can we go four days now? And I don't know if that's an option, they're not quite sure, we're not even sure if they can do that. But I also want to say that you're being presented a unique opportunity right now for Redwater, or for, sorry, for Rappahannock County Public Schools to stand out in the world. If you look at innovating and being flexible enough to think about not having school on Wednesdays in the traditional sense that we normally do. I, I was amazed at those numbers, that you had 94% of the staff and 71% of the parents. I didn't think you were going to get anywhere near that high, that are, that are entertaining and approachable to that idea that kids learn differently. And I do want to say that not everybody has this been a disaster for. And most schools are very rigid. And most schools are very rigid and I think COVID in the past one year has moved education 20 years forward as far as distance learning, as far as realizing that to make this equitable to other people, you can't have school have a one-size-fits-all. If you go to Europe, you can notice that oftentimes they have three days of instruction, of hardcore six-hour instruction and the other two days is when they take all their extracurriculars and put that in. And it's just, it's a model that seems to work. I mean, look at Finland, they, they go to school like four hours a day, but they don't do soccer during four hours a day, they don't do PE, they might do something different. And the fact that you guys are even looking at that makes me so excited to think that we could be a magnet school, our system, to bring people in and realize, just like that we, we were able to reopen because we're flexible and adaptable and small enough, is I, I think it's a great opportunity, not to mention all the enrichment opportunities that are out there for kids that just don't have time right now. They sit in school for eight hours a day and some kids' families really need that. And if you were able to offer an option on Wednesdays, the families could still come. Other families might not need that, but they would love for their kid to be able to take dance on a Wednesday and not have to do it. I, I know one thing COVID has really opened up to me is I don't want my family with five kids to be running everywhere, place, every single evening. And the chance that they might be able to still do these opportunities, but not have to do it in the evenings when we could have some family time is amazing to me. So I just want to say thank you for thinking of it and I hope that you guys really take a good, hard look at, at how we might be able to make this work, so.
That's great, thank you.
That's a good point about looking overseas, for examples, too. As the committee gets together, there are, I do, you see little things pop up and that's a good point.
Anyone else? Anybody would like to address the board regarding the budget tonight? Anybody? All right, moving on to action items. Is there a motion to accept the 2020, 21, 22 school calendar option number one? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, Mr. Groves, or second?
Second.
We have a second from Ms. Bynum, is there any discussion? Good word, Carol, again.
Paired up, though. No, just kidding.
I appreciate it, I know it's not easy. So a lot of good input too that you can take back to your group, your discussion group. Good. All right, everyone in favor of the motion, have you done saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? It's ordered. Motion to accept the Madison Agreement? So we have a motion, Mr. Uben, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bynum, is there any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? It's ordered, is there any new business? Our next school board meeting is the 9th of March. Am I correct on that? That's the next time we're scheduled to meet?
Yep.
At this time, we're going to be moving into closed session. We're going to be in closed session for how long, Shannon? 30 minutes, five minutes? Five minutes. 10 minutes? One minute? I'm going to say somewhere between five and 10 minutes. Just so you know, in case you want to wait for us, is there a motion, Mr. Groves? Do you have the motion for closed session?
Yeah, I do. My computer went alongside me. I move the board convene in closed session for the following purpose, to discuss and consider the appointment of staff for classified positions, coaching positions, retirement of a professional position, and discussions of superintendent goal pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1.
We have a motion, Mr. Groves, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Uben, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? It's ordered, we're going, we're going to leave the room. If you want to hang out, you can, we'll be back in 10 minutes.